Information, at least for members of the public. At work sessions, the discussion is with council. We don't take public comment at work sessions. We do at regular meetings, which will be the meeting we have next week, next Monday here. But anyway, thank you all for turning out. Mr. Shields, I understand our first agenda item is going to be deferred. Is that right?
That is correct. Mayor Tarter, members of council, members of the public. In working with the Affordable Housing Task Force, the chairman of the task force has asked if they could come to your meeting on September 4th to present the recommendations of the task force panel on our affordable housing policy, to allow just a little bit more time to work with staff on their recommendations. And so we'll bring that back to you in a month.
All right. Well, then, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Founder's Row.
Yes, sir. So, the first item on the agenda, then, is a presentation on the Founder's Row project, the special exception application and the associated rezonings. What our plan for tonight is to start with a staff presentation, and Mr. Fuller would provide that staff presentation. Then we would turn it over to Mill Creek for a developer's presentation. We're joined by Mr. Joe Muffler, Mr. Sean Caldwell, who will give that presentation. I'll also note that, in terms of staff, we have our planner Paul, our director of planning, Paul Stoddard, is here. Becky Witzman, who is going to speak on fiscal impact, our Department of Public Works director. Mike Woodfield is here as well to answer any questions that you have. Since the council last saw this project, we have been spending a lot of time with our boards and commissions, and I want to thank Mill Creek for their time and responsiveness to that process, and thank all of our board and commission members and the public who've really been incredibly engaged in this project. We've received more comment on this project, which is really just an amendment to an existing special exception application, a substantive change, but an amendment nonetheless. We received more comment on this than I think we have for any recent special exception. So, it's been an intensive process, and we thank everybody for their involvement for that. The recommendation of staff is to continue work this week and have this before the council for its consideration at your regular meeting next week. But we want council's input and feedback from tonight's discussion. So, we'll start things off with a presentation from Mr. Fuller, and then proceed as I've described.
Thank you very much. The purpose, as was mentioned, is to go over the comments that we received with the board and commissions and community organizations, as well as staff. Then, as the manager had said, we've done a lot of work on the voluntary concessions, which is really sort of the key piece that's facilitating this analysis of the request and addressing any issues that have arisen during the review process. In the staff report, there was a detailed review. It included a list of all the board and commission comments. We had a 11, let's see, attachment 11. You'll see all the board and commission comments. There was 13 organizations that commented. There was also 16 topic areas that we were able to sort by both topic area and organization. So, you've got a very organized list of all the public comments that we received over the last two months, the reviews. And so, we've also highlighted what we consider the highlights of those comments in your staff report, starting on line 52 through 121, and there's seven topic areas there with those highlights. So, in looking at the staff comments that follow that on lines 124 to 143, there's several of those that I'll highlight this evening. So, in looking at the voluntary concessions, the staff review is based on the July 11th version of those. That was the review that was sent out to the different staff members. And so, I'll go through and highlight what we've worked on very thoroughly to date with the applicant on the VCs, and they've been very forthcoming. And so, I'll highlight those changes for you. And then, also, you did receive, in your package, a July 27th version, because the VCs are constantly being revised and updated as, you know, as fluidly as we go through this special exception process. So, included in your package was July 27th, and the ones I'm highlighting now are from a couple of weeks earlier, because that was the full review we had. And we'll sort of fill in the gaps between the applicant and myself. Also, there was some additional work, and your Friday notes included an August 3rd version. So, you know, we're constantly refining those with the applicant. The list of the highlights that I have on the VC changes, and you also have a list in your package that was on the first page or so. It lists section, item, and a description of the change, and this was done by the applicant to highlight all the changes in the VCs. And that is up to date with the July 27th package and August 3rd, I believe, as well.
August 3rd.
Yeah, okay. So, that is current. So, looking at the changes, as we know, it was, it's mainly a use change. That's the request. And so, the age-restricted residential component was added in lieu of the hotel use, as we've previously talked about. The cash contributions for VCs related to affordable dwelling, and recreation, parks, and library, and all those financial contributions are tied to the residential unit count totals and correspond with the 72 units that were added for the age-restricted as well. In terms of the active adult community itself, language clarifying the ownership and the minimum age requirements for the building, and additional provisions that include individuals aged 18 years and younger will be restricted from residing in the building. Those have been worked on and refined. The city attorney and the applicant's attorney have been working on that language. The library contribution, that was increased from .62 per residential foot to .70. Going to the theater space, the maximum square footage for the theater has been increased from 33,000 to 35,000. Originally, that was a range from 20,000 to 33,000. So, that's a large commercial area, and that includes the upstairs box and their downstairs bar and lobby. Bike share, the, there was a $20,000 cap on that. That's been removed, and so, the full amount of actual cost going forward for the operation and maintenance of those facilities will be covered by the applicant. The lead, the, with the hotel not part of the project as proposed, the lead related to the hotel was removed, as well as the shuttle service on that. The NGBS silver for the age-restricted multifamily residences are included with the multifamily apartments in VC number 7, and to achieve the National Green Building Silver Certification for multifamily portions of the project, as well as gold has been added for that as well. The ADU control period has been extended for the life of the project, which is a major change we've seen in the last two special exception applications. And then, cash in lieu of ADUs, language was provided, so that's an option, a future option for the city, and our option. Food and beverage, the guaranteed minimum allotment was increased from 20,000 to 25,000 square feet. We're continuing to discuss that with the applicant. I'll touch on that under the staff comments. The theater capacity has changed from a minimum of 400 seats to 750 seats, with a maximum of 850 in that range. Retail space, a provision was added that requires completion of a cold dark shell retail space prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for the last 20 residential units. So, this is on the back end. The commercial and the residential will be delivered concurrently in terms of the basic building, because the podium is the commercial structure, and the residential will be constructed on top of that. The water feature, the applicant is firmly committed to providing a water feature in Market Square, and that'll be approved through the final site plan process. Charging stations, the number of conduits for electric vehicles, charging stations has doubled to 10 in lieu of the original five. And metro shuttle service has been clarified that they will have one metro shuttle servicing the market rate in age-restricted residential buildings. Just as a final comment, the site plan has been submitted and reviewed, and the staff has done a complete review, and we're near the end of that review, and we'll be advertising a public hearing and taking it to the planning commission. So, currently, staff is working through the details of this project, and the AEB has also met and reviewed this several times, most recently on July 11th, and they provide extensive comments on the building architecture, materials, facade, and the corner designs. So, those have been provided to staff and will be provided to the planning commission as well. So, that's the highlights for the staff report tonight. I know Becky is available here from Economic Development to talk about fiscal impact, if you have some questions, but we weren't planning to do additional presentation on that this evening. So, I just wanted to note that she's here. So, at this point, we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Hi. My name is Sean Caldwell. I'm the senior managing director with Mill Creek Residential. I think this is right around my fourth anniversary of working on Founder's Row, and I think it's a much longer tenure for all of you. I think you've been looking at this for five to six years. You know, this was a, never considered to be a minor amendment, contemplating an age-restricted use over hotel use. I don't think we contemplated the changes necessarily going in. That was probably necessary to get here today, but I'd like to frankly thank the process, the leadership in the community for being very involved, and frankly, at the end of the day, making this a better community for the city and a better investment for Mill Creek than it was with the original approval. The changes are significant. The changes range from the macro to the micro. I think the macro changes were broadly addressed well by staff. I think the micro changes are probably best addressed by those who have been working feverishly with staff over the past couple of months, and we're proud to present those tonight and welcome feedback. I believe that we have listened to everything, addressed most, if not all, and when we haven't been able to accomplish something, it's been thoughtful. I'd like to, with that, I'd like to introduce the team that we've brought tonight. Joe Muffler, who's my colleague from Mill Creek, has been leading the efforts over the last few months, so he'll be leading the conversation tonight. We have brought, in addition to our, of course, legal counsel with any public hearing, but we've also brought principals from each of our design firms with WDG Architecture, who's here to answer architectural questions and present. Walter Phillips, our civil engineer, Wells &amp; Associates for any traffic issues that pop up, and Urban Engineering. So, on behalf of Mill Creek, thank you for this opportunity, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to Joe for his presentation.
Thanks, Sean.
Good intro. So, I wanted to touch base on the changes that have occurred with this project since our initial joint work session back in May. It's been a long process. It feels like May was both 10 days and 10 years ago at this point, but we have truly enjoyed meeting with all the various planning, or sorry, boards.
Am I on now? Hot mic. So, we've enjoyed meeting with all the boards and commissions, hearing the feedback, having a town hall with the neighbors and local citizens, and doing our best, as Sean said, to really take to heart all of the comments, concerns, suggestions, improvements. And I think that what we're going to present to you tonight is a superior product than, you know, what we had back in May, and that's a tribute to the team that we've brought and everyone in the city as well. So, Gary has summarized a lot of the changes. I apologize for the redundancy, but I do want to offer a chance to go through them as well and expand on, if necessary. So, first and foremost, I wanted to present the timeline that we are operating under right now, assuming, you know, there's some assumptions built into here, based on how tonight goes, based on if approval occurs next week, and then, planning commission site plan approval in early September. If that does happen, just like we said back in May, we would be ready and able to start construction very shortly after that site plan approval. I will reemphasize that we still have our entire capital stack lined up for this investment. City Works Restaurant is still with a signed lease. Studio Movie Grill is still here with a signed lease, and our team is ready to go and begin on this as soon as we have the approvals in line. And I applaud the city for really assisting us meeting these tight deadlines. So, here's where we get into the revisions, and I'm not going to touch on all the revisions. That matrix does summarize them. Many of them are administrative. You know, we've corrected all dates and square footages to reflect the current design, which I know was a big topic of conversation. We want to make sure this is very buttoned up, but there are some bold items, as you'll see in this matrix, that I do want to touch on. I apologize. I'm going to look at my paper, since I can't really see the TV. The square footages and unit counts that are reflected in our site plan submission are also what are reflected in the fiscal impact. So, those are married together. We are still working with the city on refining some language and verbiage to confirm that the assumptions in the fiscal impact are accurate, but the square footages that have been updated in the VCs are what is in the site plan, are what is in the fiscal impact. Gary touched on the proposed food and beverage establishment, which we have increased from 20,000 to 25,000 square feet. This is one of the topics of conversation that the city has reached out to, and we plan on discussing tomorrow or in the coming days, to further refine the definition of food and beverage. We are aligned on this. It's really, boils down to wordsmithing it and making sure that our expectations and deliverables all align. Along with that comes with the delivery of the shell space in line with residential certificates of occupancy. It's been brought to our attention as a concern of the city, rightfully so, that this doesn't just be a, that the residential doesn't take preference over the commercial space, that the commercial space is thoughtfully designed, that we are actively marketing it, and that we are doing our best to get the right tenants into there. Our goals are obviously aligned with that as well. So, again, it's about wordsmithing and making sure that we have the proper expectations certified in the VCs. In this, we do have a portion of the cold dark retail space being delivered in line with the first residential certificate of occupancy, and that is an update that was not in the original VCs. The active adult community, one of the big topics of conversation when we met a couple of months ago was regarding the minimum age restriction in the, in that community. Suffice it to say, there's been many conversations with our attorneys, with the city's attorneys, and it is legal doctrine through federal and state regulations that we can set a minimum age requirement for that property. We have set that in the VCs. No one under the, no one 18 and under can live in that building. We will put that in our lease. That lease will be reviewed by the city attorney and city manager prior to our certificate of occupancy in that building, to ensure that we are meeting those standards. We have added CPI adjustment language to all capital contributions in here. That was a request of the mayor, so that if there were to be a delay in this project, if we were to be approved in September, and there were a delay where we were not to begin construction until next March, those financial contributions would increase with the CPI adjustment at the beginning of the year. The term of the affordable dwelling unit program has been increased from 20 years to the life of the project, which we think is a substantial benefit to the city and to the community. Again, I'm skipping around to these bold ones. We have provided a firm fixed commitment to a water feature in the Market Square, and I'll touch more on the Market Square later in this presentation. A big topic conversation, which we'll dive into the micro shortly here, is that in our VCs, after extensive conversations with our engineers at Walter Phillips Traffic Consultant Wells &amp; Associates and the city's engineers, is our recommendation that we remove the proposed crosswalk from the intersection of Northwest and Grove, Northwest Street and Grove Avenue. We have discussed this with neighbors. We have discussed this with planning commission. We've discussed this with council, and ultimately, the result has been that we simply don't believe we can build, create, manage a safe enough environment to encourage a pedestrian crossing there. And again, I will touch on that a little bit more, but we have removed that from our VCs, which is in line with our newly submitted CDP. Another large change to the VCs is that while we are asking to maintain, while we are maintaining the NGBS silver certification for the main residential building, we have increased our contribution to NGBS gold, which is the next level up, for the age-restricted property. We have also, it was also requested of us to do some kind of green building standard for the commercial property, which is difficult, since as we build it out, it is cold dark shell, but we have certified that it will meet the ASH rate 90.1 version 2010 requirements. That was discussed with the Environmental Sustainability Committee, and these are what we have included in our VCs. We have doubled both the installed electrical vehicle charging stations and the future, the conduits for future stations, from five and five to 10 each. The cap on the bike share maintenance has been removed, and will bear the full cost for the life of the project. We have increased the library contribution from 62 cents to 70 cents. We understand that that is a big issue with the city, and we want to make sure that we're contributing fully to that as well. As well, some of the language in that term was revised from building construction to general library use, as requested by the library commission. Lastly, I think, on here was that, per the mayor's request, we have revised the expiration of the special exception from 36 months to 18 months. We feel that is duly appropriate. Again, there are many other changes. You'll see them in your matrix, but I did want to highlight some of the big ones that have come out from these last couple of months of discussions and meeting with boards and commissions. Here are amended benefits package, which looks very similar outside the library contribution to where it was back in May. There have been substantial changes to the overall package, though, many of which I just touched on. In fact, I don't think there's anything on here that I didn't just touch on. Clarification, specific language on the age-restricted housing. Without getting into the nuance, again, it has been verified through the city attorney, through our attorneys, that we can propose a minimum age requirement on that, so there will be no impact to the school systems, and then, the city manager and attorney can verify that through our lease. There have been a lot of questions about the Market Square. There were a lot of questions at the last council meeting. If you've gone to any of our meetings over the last two months, you've seen these slides, but I would, for the record, just like to preserve them and would entertain any comments or questions you may have once the presentation is over. So, our biggest concern in the Market Square was to create a flexible environment where people could dine, entertain, where children could play, where you could shut down for events, be they concerts or farmers markets, where you could have a real heartbeat of, not only the community, but a true gathering space for the city. So, it was really important for us to maintain an open, flexible atmosphere. So, we have touched on this with the arts committee, with the environmental committee, and reviewed, you know, how the water is recycled, make sure we have enough power and lighting for performances. But I did want to show a graphic that I believe was requested us, of us, at the last city council meeting, which was kind of a breakdown of the size of the Market Square. It's sizable. It's 17,000 square feet. One of the things that we touched on is it does expand across the Founder's Avenue street, so that the Founder's Avenue can be cut off north and south with turnarounds, so you can expand across the entire street for these large events. You have a turf lawn. You have a spray ground, water fountain, which I'll touch on here in a second, for family, for entertainment, and for just the nice ambiance of the, of the square. And that's what we're committed to in the VCs. Various other elements as well that I am happy to touch on. Here's some more information on the spray ground, but we are talking about, you know, integral jets, spray up that you can play in or can be cordoned off for just a nice ambiance as well. Public dining, one of the big concerns, or not concerns, I think one of the big attractive qualities of this project is that we can bring a vibrant outdoor atmosphere to Broad Street, to really activate the space internally and externally. So, it's hard, you might be able to see it on here, but all the yellow sections around the perimeter of the building are potential outdoor dining spaces. By no means will all of them be outdoor dining spaces, but it was requested of us to illustrate how outdoor dining could be activated in this community. One of the things that has come up through the site plan review, through some of the boards and commissions, is that the typical streetscape standard in Falls Church calls for a 10-foot pedestrian clear. When you account for the plantings and the 10 feet, you're at the building, so there would be no outdoor dining. So, through the VCs and through the new commercial streetscape standards, there is a provision that allows for 6-foot clear when you do have the outdoor dining. We'll be adding those notes to our site plan submission, and those have been clarified as well with staff. So, the first big issue that we wanted to touch on tonight was this crosswalk. Again, this has been discussed since the initial CDP, when it was expressed from some people that that crosswalk was dangerous. Others supported it, thinking that pedestrians would utilize it. We have studied this thing every which way over the course of the four years that we've been working on this, and ultimately, you know, despite planning commission's recommendations and what, again, it's been 50/50 pretty much wherever we've gone, we've realized we were working extremely hard to make this a safe environment. And it reached a point where simply, we never thought it could be, we never could be very safe, and for how hard we were working to make it this safe, the best recommendation, in our estimation, is to remove it and to direct people to the crosswalks, which are north along Northwest and south along West and Broad. So, as you can see, there is plantings there that would discourage people from crossing the street. As you all know, any street, any sidewalk, you can't always discourage people from crossing a street where there is no crosswalk, unless you put fences up all along your streetscapes, which no one wants to do. So, you can never stop people from doing what they want to do, I guess, is the point here, but we would like to discourage them from using this crosswalk. And the main reason has to do with distance, with site distance. Even if you were to remove these trees, which creates a naked corner, which is unattractive in and of itself, you're still, you're still bumping up against minimum site restrictions, as would be recommended by traffic codes and councils that have studied this. I do have my traffic engineer and civil engineer who can speak much more eloquently about this, but the summation from our perspective, that is, again, supported by the city staff's Department of Public Works and their transportation engineers, is that this is a dangerous intersection and that this should be removed. So, we have included this, again, in our VCs and our CDP with the crosswalk removed, pending, again, any discussion that we have here tonight. This is the prior recommendation, which we could engineer to try to be safe, but ultimately, we don't believe is safe. And actually, we, so, city staff created a video for us, if you don't mind pulling up the first video showing how dangerous. So, there is a person that's getting ready to cross the street where that crosswalk would be, and you can see from the driver's perspective how quickly that pops up on you. And again, it's not just moving west to east across Grove. Nope, the other video. So, it's not just, and you'll see it on this, it's not just moving west to east on Grove, which is what a lot of, we've talked about a lot. It's also coming the other way, from Founder's Row across the street. Yeah, it's that one. So, again, this is courtesy of city staff, who submitted this to us and said we'd strongly encourage you to evaluate. So, this is moving up, and right there is the first glance you get of someone trying to cross the street. So, again, that's, that was submitted to us by city staff. We are happy to work with you however you want. It's just a recommendation. I'm not a traffic consultant or a traffic engineer, so I defer to people that I consider the experts in that, and the experts are telling me it's not safe. If you don't mind going back to the PowerPoint presentation now. The last slide in here, actually, I think there's two more slides with regards to this There is an alternative that we could propose, which is relocating the crosswalk south along Northwest to just north of the Wells Fargo entrance. There is a lot of geometry concerns. There's a lot of different traffic coming in and out here that is also of concern. It does allow for the site distance, but it does not allow for pedestrian refuge. I believe what this slide is trying to illustrate, courtesy of my traffic consultant and civil engineer, is that even at this revised intersection, it does not meet the requirements, as would be proposed by traffic councils. So, again, we're proposing we remove it, and we're happy to discuss further. I don't think I'm going to touch much on these existing conditions, because you've seen these over the course of years. The reality is our traffic signals and other crosswalks and other traffic improvements have not changed. The only change that has occurred is just based on the geometry of the buildings, the layout of the garage, various requests from staff, is that we are asking for a 5% reduction, whereas prior, we were asking for a 3% reduction. I believe that amounts to approximately 10 extra spaces. We still believe that we are parked adequately, but that has been the biggest, that's the only change, really, is 5% parking reduction. And again, we'll reiterate that the proposed adult housing does project to have fewer vehicle trips than the prior approved hotel use. The fiscal impact, you all have seen, so I don't think we need to touch on it. Becky's here, but this has not changed since that early June, last fiscal impact update. So, now we get into the fun part, which is the architect. Oh, sorry, one last slide. So, touching base on retail, again, SMG, City Works are still there. I can tell you that since we've announced SMG at ICSC, which was in line with that May presentation, just as we predicted, the interest in this tangible interest in terms of document exchange, letter of intent negotiation, has increased tenfold. There have been at least three full-service restaurants that have engaged with us. There's been about double that for fast casual restaurants, not to mention service, you know, your typical boutique retail, your fitness. There is a tremendous amount of interest, and we are in the, we have the luxury now with 50% of the retail being pre-leased, to really be strategic in who we negotiate with, to make sure that we're getting the right tenants here that really fits Falls Church. So, we're happy with the way the retail is turning out on this project. Now, we've got the architectural updates. So, this has been, for lack of a better term, a sprint for us. Everyone, rightfully so, has an opinion on the architecture. Some people love one part, while other people hate it. We have done our best to be considered We have done our best to be considerate of everyone's opinions while taking, you know, the AAB's advice to heart and really working hard, really focusing on a couple key areas of the building that pops up pretty much at every meeting that we've gone to. So, the first and foremost elevation that was the subject of a lot of discussion was the southeast elevation. So this is the southeast elevation adjacent St. James' as you're coming west on Broad Street, so east to west on Broad Street. This is what was shown at the Planning Commission work session on July 2nd, and then subsequently to the AAB, right after that. We don't even have this rendering from our initial presentation to you all back in May, because we, truly, it wasn't even on our radar as a prominent elevation. So, I don't, I can't even show you where this was before, but I can tell you that this, what we showed on the 2nd, is leaps and bounds above what was shown before. So given everyone's conversation and topic that they wanted to see more masonry, that they'd like to see this be a more prominent architectural feature, they want to see more green on this, this is what we're presenting today. That entire facade is now brick. You can see that we've created a 20-foot green wall on the ground so that there is green from the car level. Again, this is going up six stories, so you're looking at, you're looking at 85 feet in height, whereas if you're in a car or pedestrian, what you're looking is at the green screen and the mason, the green wall and the masonry on the ground. We have maximized the glass on this side. We cannot put any more glass just due to code. And the last element that we've really done here is we've added that tower feature to the corner as well. One of the comments that's coming up, that's come up at Planning Commission was an issue with signage, to make sure that as people are coming from both directions on this property, that they understand this is Founder's Row, I need to make the next right and the next left into this property. So, while we do have a blade sign further down Broad Street that you can see coming east, we've now got the opportunity to create a identification marker at the top there. It also creates another focal tower along this project, which you'll see replicated, you know, throughout. So, again, from where it was a little over a month ago to where it is today, I think is leaps and bounds better. The other thing I'd like to call your attention to that you can't see on here, and you wouldn't be able to see really from the car walking along the site as well, is that internal to the courtyard, so as you can see tucked around on top there, internal to the courtyard, which is recessed very far back, but still important. All of the courtyards used to be vinyl siding. There's no more vinyl on this project. It is all cementitious. So, if you were to look at our facade calc, our cementitious have gone up, but our vinyl's completely gone. And I think we would all agree on the grand scheme of things, if you're going to have one or the other, you'd like to have the cementitious over the vinyl siding. So, that's also an improvement that we think we've managed to address. Next elevation, oh, I'm sorry, this shows in a little bit more detail the brick articulation that we have over there, so it's honestly hard to see on this screen as well, but there are different colored bricks, both on the left side and on that middle portion as well, so that you will have a pattern to that, so it's not just one brick color dominating that facade. There is a nice, a nice pattern to it. This is Broad Street as it was back in May. One of the big comments we received from AAB and others is that the cornice lines along this project are too linear, that we need to work on breaking them up, and also that we had too much cementitious on this project. This is it is, as it is now. And again, might be hard to see on this perspective. You could see if it was a little bit more up closer, if I were to zoom in, but you can notice in between each of those buildings, we have created now vertical and horizontal facade changes to break it up. I actually think you might be able to see it better on a picture that's upcoming. I'm sorry, skip. So, you might also recognize next to the parking garage above, that gray area was cementitious. It's now masonry. So we have broken up the facade, we've added some more masonry to the building, which I think creates a more engaging elevation. This is the age-restricted building, which we were told, we absolutely love the yellow brick and we absolutely hate the yellow brick. So we've worked to dampen that yellow. Actually, I think it's the same brick, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. We have made the brick look more authentic to what it actually is. I think we've shown in the last meeting, we have samples here, materials here, if you'd like to touch, see, and sniff if you would like to. But, so this is this elevation as well. One other thing to note on this corner is that we have added an additional crown to the top cornice, so, and I believe that it, that it also wraps the corner now as well. So as you're driving east on Broad, this is a more prominent architectural feature now.
What is that talking about?
Cementitious. So it's cementitious and masonry, along with glazing the windows. I don't even think, I'm sorry?
The yellow is masonry?
Yellow is brick masonry, correct.
Yeah, the lighter portion is...
So the dark gray is cementitious and the lighter portion is brick.
Yeah, so if you're looking at this, so if you're looking at this, the gray part is cementitious. The gray part is cementitious. The yellow part is brick masonry. The white parts are cast stone masonry, and then you have more cementitious as you get up top, which again, is high enough that it's cement, say that again? It's like a, it's called hardy, but it's like a cement panel. So, so yeah, so you've got cementitious, you've got brick masonry, you've got stone masonry. Everything along the bottom, for the first 20 feet though, is your masonry. So the, so the really, the immediate see and touch stuff is masonry.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I'd like to come back to that corner, which I think is very important.
Absolutely. This is the last elevation that really has been discussed ad nauseam. So, you can see on the bottom left-hand corner where this was two years ago. You can see then where it was three months ago, two and a half months ago. Again, it was asked that we break up the cornice line here. This is where we show it today. So it was a flat cornice, now it's 30 inches in verticality and about a foot in horizontal difference as well. So we believe that this has now created a much more interesting and engaging facade as well. This is another perspective from just coming north on Founder's Avenue. This is where it is today. So the main tower has not changed, but the, again, you can see how the townhome elements play into this. And this is an elevation from just further down. This is, a couple more, these are just, these aren't going to be as dramatic as the others. You might be able to tell on this one, a little bit more on the verticality of how we broke up the cornice line along Broad Street. Again, if we could zoom in, you could see it, you could see it more, but the reality is from as far down as you'll be on the sidewalk, that cornice line is going to be difficult to see anyways. But this is, this is another perspective of that. This is interior to the Market Square in the age-restricted building. This is a perspective that we had not shown before that was requested by the AAB. This is coming around Grove Avenue, where again, we've created more articulation. I believe the tower elements on each side are about four feet difference, whereas before they were half that. And we've also created more horizontal articulations in this facade as well. So this is Grove Avenue and West. We do have an animation that I can show you that is about four minutes long, if you don't mind pulling up that other video, that walks you through the property. And actually, you know what, I'm going to go over there and kind of fast-forward it to the key, to the key parts, if you don't mind. But that would ruin everyone's evening. So again, this is coming, this is coming west on Broad Street, where you can see the elements. The 3D perspectives work a little bit better, but I think maybe as you zoom in here, you're able to see, no, maybe not, the brick patterns as much. Coming down west Broad, here's where you can see the vertical articulations in the building, I think, a little bit better. So just, just the pause, you can see how we've broken up that cornice line, so they're more individually, individual designed buildings as opposed to just one linear line. And I apologize to my architects, who did a phenomenal job pulling this together, but just in the interest of time, I do want to fast-forward a little bit of this. Coming down Founder's Avenue, one of the things that you might notice here is our amenity space, which we've described and never really shown before, that's been relocated to the Founder's Avenue side to create kind of that indoor/outdoor engagement between the Market Square and the apartment buildings, as opposed to just a regular brick facade with, you know, regular windows and glazing. The Market Square, and as we come along, here is, oh, sorry? Coming along for the age-restricted building right here, with again, the corner of West and Broad. There's not much more to describe here that you didn't really see in the renderings, talking about the verticality over on what we call the triangle building over here at Grove Avenue, but the last big change really was to these townhomes as you come down Park Avenue. And this will actually show you the horizontal bumpouts as well, between the two buildings, not just the 30 inches in verticality that we've developed. And lastly, I think we do show also the landscaping over here as well, that will be on that buffer in between St. James' and our property. Thank you. I believe, I believe that about sums this up. The last thing I did want to touch on is the retail storefronts. You'll notice in those perspectives in that animation are not defined in this, and that's because it will be up to our individual tenants to define their retail storefronts. We have created an extensive retail storefront design guideline. It's about 50 pages long. Here's where you can see everything from signage to the canopies to the doors, to the colors, is defined in these guidelines. Here's examples that are in the guidelines from, you know, Pike and Rose, Mosaic, where we want to make sure that they're tasteful but dynamic, so we didn't render them, but this is a real-life example of what we expect these storefronts to look like. And that's it. I have other exhibits, whether they're shadow studies, floor plans, there are others exhibits as well, but I think that summates really the efforts that the team has put into based on the reception we've gotten from the neighbors and from the boards of the commissions. So, happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, thank you very much. You guys have clearly spent a lot of time and effort addressing and responding to concerns that you've heard, so we appreciate that. Why don't we go ahead and open it up to questions from council, either for staff or the applicant? Does anyone have any questions, what they saw tonight? Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. Well, first of all, I appreciate, again, echoing the mayor's comments, all the hard work. Appreciate the earlier submission this time around, and to boards and commissions for working hard over the summer when a lot of them normally don't meet. So, good progress has been made. So I spent most of my time reviewing the VCs, because I think that's where, it sounds like most of the substantive changes have made, been made. So I'm just going to start through my laundry list of questions. I think you touched on some of these, but I'd love some clarification. So the first one is the language around food and beverage at 25,000, and I think the discussion on what establishment really means. Are you all thinking restaurant, or does that mean something else?
So, the language that I put in there, and again, this, I received an email from the staff late this afternoon, so we're going to try to circle back on this this week, but the language I revised this to reflect was food and beverage establishments that are subject to the meal tax levy, because that's really where the fiscal impacts comes from. It comes from the meals tax. Restaurant, if you look at the definition of food and beverage establishment, restaurant is one of about 15 definitions, so whether it's a coffee shop or restaurant, there's a variety of nuance to that. And I didn't want to limit us only to the strictest definition of restaurant, because I worry about us sitting in a meeting and saying, what is a restaurant? What defines this? So, I, and again, I have to work with staff to talk this through, but our intent was to say these restaurants, that these establishments will be subject to the meals tax, which is what's reflected in the fiscal impact. Again, that needs to be discussed a little bit further, but that was my intent in these revised VCs.
Got it. I mean, obviously, we care about it for the fiscal reasons, but also because we care about what's going to go in.
Oh, absolutely.
So are you all envisioning a dining establishment of some kind, or is it going to be, you know, selling food and beverage?
So that's, that's why, I think that's where the concern from, is we didn't want to, essentially, you don't want a convenience store or a grocery store that isn't subject to the tax. We do envision having this project, I think we talked about this last time, our current merchandising plan calls for something like 30,000 to 35,000 square feet of restaurants, meaning, you know, whether it's your fast casuals or your full-service sit downs, if you define that as a restaurant, then that's what we'd envision in this project. So, again, it comes down to talking with the staff to figure out how they want to frame this. We just don't want to be too limiting. We don't, we don't want to get a good tenant three or four years from now and say, well, we can't put this in because we put this restaurant definition in, and even though you would meet the intent of it, that's just what I want to try to avoid at this point.
Now, is this separate from the, I think, a separate VC where you call out that there is going to be 28,000 square foot, square feet dedicated to table service restaurants? So this is separate from that?
Leave, yeah, so we have a minimum of two table service restaurants, and that has not been changed. So we will have a minimum of two table service restaurants.
Of 28,000 square feet, in addition to the 25 of these food and beverage establishments?
Yeah, and I apologize for that. So I, so in the revised VCs, I actually updated this language because it was confusing. What that language said was that no less than 50% of the total commercial area on the ground level will have access to a ventilation. But based on the way the comments read, it made it look like it was saying two table service restaurants totaling 28,500 square feet. That was not the intent. It was two table restaurants and 50% of the retail having access to a kitchen ventilation shaft. So, I've changed the periods and commas to make sure that's more clear.
So I guess I'm going to look to staff to make sure that we are good with that change and it's consistent with what we've negotiated.
As Mr. Ruffler said, we've, the comment on this is still ongoing, and so I think this is an area where we'd like to have further dialogue.
Absolutely.
And see if we can get the clarity that we're seeking on this, this week.
Okay. I guess my preference on this is, one, let's make sure the fiscals don't change, and two, I think Falls Church people like restaurants and dining. We like to eat out a lot.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Before you move on, are you going to move on to another topic?
I am.
If I could, just to follow up to kind of close the loop on this. So you were saying that restaurant is a quote, you know, sort of small component of possibles and possibilities. What would be the other things other than what one would customarily think of as a restaurant?
Honestly, I'd want to go through, but I'm just thinking out loud here, where you've got coffee shops, you've got, you know, specific retailers such as ice cream that are, anything that's subject to a sales and meals tax is what we want to make sure it's included in here. I might be being, I might be oversensitive on this, just because I want to be cautious of changing things too much, which is why I need to sit down with city staff and really articulate. I'm okay committing to restaurant, as long as we're all on the same page as to what that includes.
Okay, and so also, you had committed, I think, to two quote, restaurants, and I can't remember, was it white tablecloth for both of those, or is it?
It just says table service restaurant.
Table, okay, I'm sorry. So two restaurants, table service restaurants, that would be a portion of the square footage, right? So, and there may be other things other than restaurants that would be, make up the remainder of that?
Correct.
Okay, and those things might be?
Again, if we have a coffee shop, if we have an ice cream store, if we have restaurants, making sure the restaurants is, again, table service and your fast casual, fast casual establishments, just to make sure that that's, it's inclusive of that, which it might be.
Let me ask staff, is that our definition of quote, restaurant, inclusive of, for example, a coffee shop? Is that not included in our definition of a restaurant?
To tell the truth, I think we need to talk these things through.
All right, why don't you all just get together and try to square it away? And I would say sooner as opposed to later, right, if we want to hear this case potentially a week from tonight. We can't be resolving this next Monday afternoon, so anyway, all right, sorry, Ms. Hardy, please continue.
Thank you. So the next kind of comment I have, slash question, is the language on cold dark shells. I think you heard about this from us before. I think our experience so far is the cost of that initial build-out can be pretty prohibitively high, I think, for a new tenant. And so I think one lesson learned for us is, to the extent the developer can actually do more beyond a cold dark shell to make it easier and remove that barrier of entry for that first tenant, the better, right? Because we all have the aligned interest that we want the first floor filled out as soon as possible. So help me understand how much a tenant might have to spend coming into this cold dark shell. I know that you already added the concession that the shells are done before you get final COs on the residential units, but I'd love to understand what exactly cold dark shell is and how much a potential tenant might have to spend to get in there.
Let me take, let me try to take this one on. In addition to the cold dark shell, we have set aside a significant amount of money to contribute towards tenant improvements. So a cold dark shell is basically, it's the minimum, it's drywall, it's ventilation established, it's electrical brought to it, but it's a really basic, basic structure, so there's not much to that necessarily. We're within our, within our budget, we're carrying, I probably don't want to get into the details of it, but it's in the, it's, I'll just say this, it is almost, we developed the Dunloring mixed-use development there, that where the retail is 100% occupied, and on a per-square-foot basis, we're carrying twice the amount in TI budget than we did on Dunloring. Part of that is that the use that we plan on bringing in there, restaurants, actual restaurants, with no caveats next to it, they come with a higher TI amount. So, that is really how we're budgeting to make sure that the first-generation restaurants are successful.
Is that amount something that you'd be willing to commit to in VCs, so that, it sounds like you're willing to kind of put in money, and you know that you want to get, you know, good restaurants in there early? Is that something that we can get kind of firmer commitment on so that we know that you are doing it? you are doing it?
Well, I'm not sure if, how we contribute towards a tenant allowance is, that's a hard one for me to, let me think about it. I mean, I've never heard of that before, but we're carrying a substantial amount, so.
And if I may, I brought up the merchandising plan here just to speak to that a little bit more. So I brought up this merchandising plan quite a bit that's been evolved over the years with our consultants, our broker, StreetSense, et cetera, to target certain retailers here. Each of these retailers that Sean was describing carries a tenant improvement allowance that's based on market conditions that we believe that tenant would need to be successful in this space. So whether it's a fitness studio, or it's a full service restaurant, they have a different tenant service allotment allocated to them that, again, that we are carried in our budget. So as we build that shell, we are working, again, in our lease negotiations to get the best tenants in there and work with that tenant improvement allowance to bring it to them. So we'll provide the cold dark shell, and then as the tenant comes in, they can use that allowance to build it out. But I did want to say that it is a thoughtful piece in our budget based on that plan.
Let me just ask a point of clarification for that. So the TI allowances that you guys are budgeting through the leasing process, can you give us an idea of what that is per square foot based on the tenant type? Or if you're just a broad assumption of 70 bucks a square foot or 50 bucks a square foot?
Really is very, very dependent on the use. Restaurants are higher. They are $100 a foot or higher, while a Verizon store, as an estimation, would be more like $60 a foot.
So are those the actual numbers you guys are carrying for use type?
Correct. Yes, I'm giving you broad numbers, not specifics.
Sure, sure.
But we are looking at it, and part of this is, we have a merchandising plan. That merchandise, what should give you some comfort here is the TI allowance that Joe and I are carrying is reflective of the merchandising plan that's in front of you. The merchandising plan that's in front of you is very heavy on the restaurants, even more so than our VCs, right? So we are trying to aim for a plan that is higher in restaurant use, therefore higher also by definition in tenant improvement allowances. But you can kind of see where committing to that number is.
I understand. I just wanted to get a range and for folks to understand that you've got a base build out, and then you've got specific tenant improvement allowances per square foot based on type of tenant negotiation.
That's correct.
But they're all market driven.
Correct. And as an example, I believe, I mean, you guys have the lease, so for Studio Movie Grill, I believe that our tenant contribution is close to, is over $3 million. They obviously have an investment on top of that, but to give you a magnitude on one use that you're already privy to, that's north of $100 a foot for 30-plus thousand square feet.
Okay. Yeah, so on that cold dark shell, I'm not sure whether you all would ever be willing to go to a warm lit shell.
It would just reduce the TI allowance. So there's no real net benefit to it. So if you go to a warm lit shell, then you are trying to define what that use will be. If you go to a cold dark shell and hold a higher TI allowance, then it gives more flexibility as to what that tenant wants. So the higher TI allowance allows, it's still no, if we went, it ends up being in the same net position from an investment for the tenant going in.
Yeah, no, I believe kind of what your position is, and from our perspective, we just want to make sure that people are going to go in easily, right?
Right.
That there's a low barrier of entry for them. And for us, seeing cold dark shell doesn't give me, you know, warm and fuzzy feelings that people can go in there easily because they're going to spend a lot of money, not knowing what your lease negotiations and how much you're setting aside in that for TI.
Well, I can say that the two leases we have right now, 40,000 square feet, you know, close to half of the retail, that's cold dark shell. And all the letters of intent that we've discussed are based on the cold dark shell standards. So I think that it's market expectation with the cold dark shell.
What's the TI for City Works?
Call me out. I don't know off the top of my head, yeah. I mean, it's.
Why don't we do this, we will tomorrow, we will circulate to staff, what is the TI budget that we have for the two leases we have in place? And we will also communicate, we have one more that is close, and that is a different, somewhat different use, we can't go public with it, but we can reveal that number. Those numbers combined will present more than 50% of the retail, and that'll give you a flavor.
Yeah, I trust that, again, our interests are aligned too. I think it's just wanting more transparency into how you're going to make it easy for people, right?
Sure.
So next, on the crosswalk, I'm fine with removing the crosswalk. I think I've heard from enough Grove Avenue neighbors that they're concerned about kind of creating false sense of safety there. My question is, are you actually adding a sidewalk on that north side of Northwest Street?
So there is, yes, there is a sidewalk. There is a sidewalk.
Essentially paralleling the WOD, is there a sidewalk being added by you all?
Correct.
Okay, because then there is another crosswalk you're proposing where Park and West intersect, and I just want to make sure that sidewalk, or that crosswalk goes to somewhere.
Yeah, this crosswalk, so you could cross over the WOD and then wrap around to the crosswalk that's up there on Northwest Street.
Okay, because there's currently no sidewalk on that side.
Correct.
Okay. So all are on sidewalk. I know you all have had some debate around sidewalk width. My understanding, based on reading the VCs, is that you're conforming to our new street scape standards that we adopted last year, but there still sounds like there's some debate around the 10-foot clear sidewalk, and then when there's outdoor dining, not being able to achieve that 10-foot. I guess I have a question for staff to confirm. What do our street scape standards say? Does it say that even with outdoor dining, it needs to have 10-foot clear sidewalks, or does it allow for that six feet?
Is this picking me up? Yes. So the streetscape standards, which you all adopted in early 2017, do lay out standard cross sections for different kinds of streetscapes. And in the commercial sections, what it does talk about is a 10-foot clear section for pedestrian passage. Early in the document, there is a section that speaks to the need for flexibility, that early in that streetscape effort, staff had done research into other places and what makes them vibrant and successful. And they found that in that research, streetscape uses like streetscape dining, sidewalk dining are important to that. And so the idea with that flexibility section is that, for the most part, there is 10 feet clear, but sidewalk dining is important as well. So narrowing the pedestrian passage down for limited spans down to six feet allows for those 10-foot sections where people need to pass, but six-foot sections that allow for sidewalk dining.
So our standards do say that six feet would be okay in that flexibility language?
Yeah, I think what's laid out, and really here what's driving this, is the principles that are defined in the streetscape standards that talk about not only pedestrian access, but also vibrancy and commercial activity. And so the flexibility section is there specifically to allow for these things to be balanced on a project-by-project basis.
Yeah, because I don't want to relitigate whether it's six versus 10, because clearly we had a task force working on that. I just want to make sure that whatever we adopted, you all are adhering to that.
I mean, as someone who was on that task force, I would say that one of the recommendations, to my recollection, was to have some articulation in buildings to actually create spaces so that you could have designated outdoor dining spaces that wouldn't impinge upon clear space. And that's not happening here, but I think we should keep that in mind. I'm not going to ask you in the 11th hour to notch your building out, but I do think that is something we ought to be considering, and it was one of the recommendations, to my recollection of the task force, who actually adopt a standard that certain portion of the frontage would actually have some kind of indentation to allow for on-street dining or other things to happen.
That is correct, that that was something the committee talked about, was follow-on efforts to the streetscape adoption, zoning amendments and other things that could be used to create deeper indentations into the building, more than architectural facade changes, but more actual changes to the streetscape to allow deeper pockets for sidewalk dining.
So I guess to follow on the mayor's point, I guess I will say that the more, the wider you have, the better. Having just grown out of the stroller stage, now I walk with a dog, and we do take up a fair amount of room still. And so to the extent that you can go beyond six, whether it's indenting your building or adding, you know, being thoughtful about where that's outdoor dining, it sounds like even if you're meeting the letter of the streetscape standards, I think there's probably a majority of us who would like to see this clear sidewalk be wider. And I think I read comments from both the EDA, the CACT, and the ESC up to that point. Moving on, senior housing. I wanted to confirm with the city attorney that the new language on the restriction is now consistent with the approach we used for the cottage project? I know it's a different animal, given that one's condos and one's apartments, but I want to make sure that we are comfortable with the new language.
Yes, I have worked with the applicant's counsel on this language. It is different because it's not an ownership, but the assurances are there in the fact that there will have to be a lease requirement for no residents under 18, and that that requirement provision will have to be approved by myself and the city manager prior to any leases being entered into, prior to certificates of occupancy being issued for any of the adult housing. So that should ensure that the no one under 18 restriction will be in there, and it is certainly something that's permissible for an adult community like this.
And the enforcement mechanism essentially is our VCs, or what, I guess, teeth does the city have in this?
That's correct. It would be the VCs, but it's also in their lease, so the tenants will be bound by that lease as well. Of course, it would be up to the applicant to enforce those leases, and the VC commits them to take that enforcement action, so we could approach them if we found there was a problem with it.
Okay, great, thank you. On the SE approval, so I know that you talked about 18 months versus, I think originally it was 36 months. I wanted to confirm that with, if we do approve this SE amendment next week, it does restart the clock, so it would not automatically expire from the January 2016 date. That's what you're proposing, is restarting the clock with 18 months from now?
Yes, I think that's the, yes, it would be 18 months from the current action.
I know that, based on the timeline, you all intend to break ground hopefully by September. Why do we need 18 months?
It's flexibility. If we hear from you all that 12 months sounds better, I mean, it's flexibility on our part. I figured cutting it in half was.
No, no, I mean, 36 with 18 is good, but, you know, if you're planning to break ground by September, shorter's better too. Parking, and I think you got probably a comment, I think, maybe at the community town hall on smart parking sensors in the garage. I don't know whether you all have more thoughts on that. I think anything that would help efficiently people find parking spaces, especially if you're looking for a 5% reduction, that would be helpful. And then a question for the city manager. I think we've heard from the neighbors that they would like some sort of street permit parking on Park Avenue. Is there an update on kind of what our thinking is? Is that something that we think we could do before the project is done, or is it something we would roll out afterwards?
The discussions we've had with the neighbors really go back to when this project first was being considered, and the discussion at that time was that the parking regulations would go in for residential-only permits prior to construction, so that they would be enforced during the construction period.
Okay, so that relates to my next question around kind of a construction management plan, so I know normally you all take care of this later, but I assume you all are starting to think about staging and parking for vehicles. I assume you will not be parking on residential streets.
Correct.
What's your plan for that right now? Do you have any early thoughts to share with us?
Yeah, so we've, transparently, we've been in conversations with the St. James Church about creating staging in parking areas. We've been in conversations with other owners of office buildings, retail properties, to have construction parking there as well. Our construction team has been working with our civil engineer. Actually, they've met with the city once, if not twice, to discuss the parking plan and evolve it. We will have submitted something that has to be approved, I believe this is in the VCs, or it's at least in the site plan, that it's submitted and approved prior to the issuance of a demolition permit. So before we're actually working, we'll have a plan in place.
Okay. Last questions, thank you for bearing with me. Meetings with neighbors, I was thinking back to my comments at first reading, and I think one of the things I asked you all to make sure to do is engage with the neighbors. Have you all had some sit downs with them to hear from them?
So we had a town hall meeting, I'm blanking, again, it feels like 10 years and 10 days, so I can't honestly remember when we had that town hall. End of June, I believe, that was very well attended, and I believe there were members of council there as well. We've engaged with the neighbors before and after, other boards and commission hearings as well. So, you know, given the, between those boards and commissions hearing and the town hall, we believe that we've received a lot of feedback, that we've done our best to incorporate into this design as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'd like to focus my question on just one main topic. It's always been my notion that this development would be highly walkable to all of those of us who live in this end of town, and that therefore the design of it should encourage that as much as possible. I think it does, and that's good. But I would like to ask a little bit more about the crossing at the Old Brick House Square entrance opposite your entrance on Broad Street, and whether that is a fully signalized and crosswalked intersection. I just haven't seen any drawings of that lately.
I'm going to bring my civil engineer up here, maybe speak to more to the traffic patterns and crossings, or Will, whoever can speak to that. Musical chairs.
Musical chairs tonight. Members of council, Will Johnson, Wells &amp; Associates. And I apologize, you're referring to the Eastern Mo site entrance on West Broad Street, and that is correct, that will be signalized, and there will be a pedestrian-activated crosswalk to cross Broad Street at that location.
Okay, so in essence, what we're creating there is a mid-block crossing, and we really don't have a place for pedestrians now to cross for quite a long distance. We'll be creating that, giving the opportunity for people who live south of Broad to walk and cross at that intersection without having to go up to Broad and West.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks for that. On the matter of the crosswalk at Grove or not, I guess it's, again, been my thinking that this is going to dramatically transform the way this whole area functions to the better. You know, traffic is going to move slower in a more controlled manner around the bike trail, at the intersection of Park Avenue, you know, coming out of the townhouses at Steeple's Court, coming out of Grove Avenue, coming out of the bank, coming off Broad Street, up Northwest Street. You know, one time my wife was exiting the gas station there and was hit by a car that, you know, was basically doing what your video showed, just coming around the corner and, you know, not paying attention. People are going to be paying much more attention.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's okay. Gave us an excuse to buy a new station wagon. She was all right. Thank you, though. It's my expectation that, you know, this is going to be a very different kind of place when this building gets put in. People are not going to be cruising at high speeds, you know, swooping around the corner of Northwest Street headed south. And to that end, I'm interested more, I suppose, in a crossing at Grove than maybe some are who see things the way they are now. I get it that the way they are now, and the way that video showed, it's hard to envision a safe crossing, but I, you know, dream things that never were, hopefully will be, and would at least like to have a discussion with staff and with you all about if we decide not to do a crosswalk right now at that location, and I'm talking about, I think, the more southern location, at least, you know, once the building's open and functioning, having a look back, a TDM, you know, how things work out in the first year, and try to, you know, keep that in an active file. Because I do think that people coming down Grove Avenue, you know, they can, they can go to the other two intersections, but they're not, they won't. I mean, just as a practical matter, they won't, because as Ms. Hardy pointed out, you're going to have a nice sidewalk right there across the street. I mean, right now, people dash across from, you know, Grove to the 7-Eleven, and they're going to do that even more when we get this project built, I think. So, you know, there have been projects approved with TDMs that we said we would have a look back at after a year, but that's kind of a new idea. I would, I guess, like to put that on the table as something that we might think about, and ask staff that feel strongly that we shouldn't have a crosswalk here, at least to keep an open mind about whether we might.
So, Mr. Duncan, we've done that many times before with traffic situations, such as it's common in Fairfax County to do a warrant study after, you know, prior to bond release to make sure that the community is functioning fully. You know, and you can't wait for the first occupants, you have to really wait for it to be fully occupied. So we'd be more than comfortable putting it as a backend condition, if you will.
Okay, I think that'd be helpful. The only other point I wanted to make is just to thank you all and the citizens. I think the nature of the information you presented tonight is very much in keeping with the boards and commission meetings that I was able to attend during the summer. I'm impressed that the citizenry and staff particularly have done a lot of work on this at a time when normally, you know, we back off a little bit, we've not backed off the throttle at all, and that's appropriate, and I think we're teed up to move things along here. Lastly, your arrangements with any remaining current tenants, I think I asked about this back in May or June, or whenever it was, anything new to report there? Anything new to report there? Any, any changes, any differences, any...
There is, and I apologize, Becky, who I told, who I said I would preempt this question and bring it up. So we have reached an agreement with the 7-Eleven tenant, which was the outstanding tenant. In fact, we've, we've made, so we have a termination agreement with them that includes termination fees. We have paid non-refundable deposit to them. They are moving out on September 30th, or by September 30th. So that was the last of the tenant issues that we needed to address.
And the Sunoco Station is month to month, and their lease would expire...
All of these, all of the remaining tenants require just notice periods. So once we have more confidence in the direction, we'll provide these notices and have that all arranged.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Mr... No, no, please you, no.
I'm Mr. Lincoln House, how about that?
Thank you guys for sticking with us on this. I will say, as someone that serves as liaison to the Architectural Advisory Board, that three-hour marathon meeting about a month ago, it was good to see what I would say is a decent amount of progress, both on the cornice line and in the southeast corner of the building. I was pleased to see that. One of the things that I would like you guys to consider, and there may be some other comments related to this later, just related to that architecture, is to try to remove more of the cementitious panel. I'm not a huge fan of that. I know brick and mortar is more expensive, but as I've said before, and I think many others have said as well in the community, is that this is, this is an iconic corner. It will be very prominent in the city, and we want things to stand the test of time. And so I'd like to see more brick and mortar, if absolutely possible. I've got a number of comments, and I'm gonna kind of work through our council packet here where I made these notes, and just ask you guys to address these one by one. Piggybacking off of a comment Councilman Duncan made related to the, and Ms. Hardy related to the length and distance between the two signalized crosswalks that you have there. What is that distance? I mean, I do expect folks to jaywalk and to sprint across the street. Do we have any idea of what that distance is between those two crossings?
220 to 250.
220 to 220.
Which one are you speaking about again?
So you've got, you have, if I'm not mistaken, you guys are proposing two signalized crosswalks at this point, because you're removing the one from Grove, correct? So you've got one at the corner of...
Broad and West.
Broad and West, and then you've got another one further down Park Avenue.
Correct.
So what is the distance between those two crosswalks?
If you're standing at the intersection, so... So if you're standing at the Grove and West intersection, it's between 220 to 250 to either of the signalized crosswalks.
Okay. I personally, I question, I understand the concern about safety. In the video you guys provided, I think it makes a lot of sense. I've jaywalked from, in all fairness, from the Wells Fargo across the street to the 7-Eleven, and it's, and it's dangerous right there. My concern, I think, is what some others have alluded to, is that by removing that intersection, or I'm sorry, removing that crossing, we've actually exacerbated the problem. Because folks are still going to look from one sidewalk to the next and say, well, that's the clearest, you know, and straightest point between where I want to get to where I need to, you know, where I'm coming from. And I would like to think a little more creatively about that. And you guys may laugh at this idea, but, you know, there's a couple of different options there. One, and I don't know if we've looked at signalizing that intersection, not with a crosswalk, but with traffic signals, potentially redesigning the intersection, which I know will be incredibly expensive, but making it more of a T-intersection without some of the sightline issues. Or, more comically, but seriously, potentially a pedestrian bridge that goes over. That probably ruins the entire sightline, so I'd like to go with option one and two. But, but I know that my kids will visit this, I know that folks will be coming down Grove Avenue. Hopefully, one day, we have folks that are biking from Metro to visit this site, and they'll be coming down Grove Avenue from West Falls Church Metro. I think you guys need to think very hard about how we address that, that intersection, because it do have serious safety concerns, even with the decision to remove that crosswalk, which is more of a proactive, hey, cross here, I get it, I totally understand why you did that. But I think we need to think about that. TDM study is great, but after the fact, but I don't want that after the fact to be after somebody's been hit, because they've been trying to cross there. Related to the ADUs, maybe this is a question for, for the city attorney as well. Now that we have, or are considering a 55-plus community there, based on our interpretation of what the city needs and what's best for the city as it relates to that 6% ADU, do we have the ability to allocate the units how we see fit between market and 55-plus? Meaning, if you're looking at the total 394 units and it's 6%, could that 6% go into the 55, all of it? Or could it go all into market? Or could we determine? Or is it 6% of 72 and 6% of 322? And then a follow-up question to that before you answer is, does that materially impact the economics of the deal for you guys?
We, so we have, we've taken the approach of paraded allocation. It is, I'll, pardon me, I'll speak clear. We have taken the approach of just a, a straight allocation. There is a, if you recall, there is a slightly higher percentage of affordable units in the market rate, and then there is a respective percentage in the, in the age-restricted building. A meaningful shift would, would have drastic impact. I don't know which way it would be, but...
Let's assume it was more in the 55-plus. There's been an ongoing discussion here in the city in terms of kind of whole lifecycle living, in terms of the affordability for folks that truly want to downsize. And we don't have a large number of downsize opportunities that I would necessarily consider affordable for folks that are moving out of their homes. And if this is truly a 55-plus, age-restricted, if we had the ability to make more of those units affordable, and I'm not saying that that's the will of the council, or the, I was just thinking through this as I'm reading through all these comments, and I understand that's probably the higher margin for you guys, so that may have an economic impact on the project?
Well, it's, I'm not sure if I would say it's the higher margin, but what it is, is it's, it's absolutely the higher operating expense, because it's the higher serviced aspect with that community. So, you know, by definition, lower revenue on something that's higher expense has a...
Lower margins.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, there you go, there you go.
Okay. Carol, do you know the answer to that? If, if, let's, and I'll just assume for a second that within the voluntary concessions, we have the ability to move around the total 6% over the 394 units. Let's assume that that's the case. Are we able to do that, or is, or is we locked in proportionate?
Well, I, I think if the applicant proposes a different mix, if that's what the decision is to put in, it can be mixed anyway within the VCs. I don't know that the city has absolute control over it, but if that's a, if a different arrangement is made, and that's what the applicant proposes in their VCs, certainly you can make the mix different.
Okay. This is not something that I've even discussed with folks in the community. This was one point that popped into my head literally as we're sitting here. But it may be worth something discussing within council and with, within folks in the community is to, because this is such a meaningful project, and it's a large number of residential spaces. And I also think that that would materially impact the net fiscal revenue associated with this project as well, depending on where you shift that number of ADU. So, something to, to discuss, and how we pursue it, pursue that or proceed with that, I don't know, but maybe it's worth a follow-up discussion before next week's meeting. So to piggyback, one of the, piggyback on Mr. Duncan's question related to all of the other tenants over there, I have been approached by some of the, some of our constituents related to control over the entire site before this moves to a final approval. And there was a question as to whether you guys actually had control of the 7-Eleven. It sounds like that's proceeded. Do you anticipate having actually transacted an acquisition of the 7-Eleven site before this goes to approval next week? I can't remember the date that you threw out there.
So, no. I mean, we, right now, we, meaning, we're, we are contractual purchaser from the Shreve family. We have taken the, we have signed a binding agreement with both Mr. Shreve and the folks from 7-Eleven. The financial commitment deposit, if you will, came from our side to 7-Eleven. It's in anticipation of a approximately, you know, if our approvals are in August and our site plan approval is early September, we anticipate taking ownership of the land prior to 7-Eleven leaving. So there's kind of an intermediate...
So you're, so actually, closing the deal with them is contingent upon you guys getting...
No, they, they leave on that date.
Okay.
So they leave on that date. We have, we, there is, not to get too much into their business terms, but there is basically, they have agreed to a two-payment. There's, there's a upfront payment and a final payment. The upfront payment is a substantial deposit. The final payment comes on September, on September 30th. And then when we make that final payment on September 30th, they have to vacate.
Okay. I think it'd be useful if you guys were able to provide that paperwork to, to the city, just to verify that. And then I have a question for the city attorney. As we go through, through this process, if it is decided that we want to pursue, does it present an issue that, if it's approved, that they don't technically, at this point, own the 7-Eleven site?
It's, there are, when someone's a contract purchaser, there are zoning approvals and special exception approvals done all the time. So no, that would not present an issue.
Okay, great. I think it'd still be helpful to get the, the paperwork and just the terms, so folks know where we stand in terms of the timing of this. Because I think the last thing anybody wants is to get to the point of project exhaustion, which feels like it's come a long way. But there are a lot of folks that have project exhaustion, and if there was a hiccup related to one component of the site, folks are gonna be asking why we went through all this trouble again, when you've still got one person that is not interested.
Sure. We, we certainly did not negotiate it with divulging it in mind. Assuming that there's no confidentiality provisions within it that would prevent us from doing it, we'll absolutely...
Whatever you guys can provide that would assure the, the city that, that we're well on our way there.
Understood.
And then I want to touch on one thing that may warrant larger discussion with the city, and this came from an issue that I've had for quite a while with this project, but also based on some comments from, from Vipus, which makes a very good point. That's related to the, to the theater tax associated with this site. And I know earlier, back in 2016, when there was contemplation about a theater and the cost to construct underground parking, and I would ask for clarification if that was the intent of passing the theater tax. This predates my time here on council. If, if the reason the theater tax was passed was to offset the cost of constructing underground, at least that was some of the comments that Vipus has made, is that correct? Okay. So one of the comments they had made was, now that the, the parking does not have to go, that was not below grade to the extent that it was, why do we need the same theater tax at 10% of each ticketed price if it was used to offset the cost? And I, I remember from a previous statement you guys made, that that theater tax, the way that it's written goes back to subsidize the construction, which would effectively go back to the developer, but you guys had stated that you're now giving that back to the operator of the theater, which I would imagine, to sign that market lease rate, you did that to offset their operational costs, which was enticing them, correct?
Well, let me, it's a great question. Let me try to address it. First and foremost, theaters, to go back to your comment about margins, theaters are a very low-margin business from our side of the thing, from our side of the equation, not necessarily theirs. And the theater being below grade, it's really about high-density construction, right? Theaters are typically built, if in the classic model of where theaters work, they have been traditionally around surface-parked theaters, right? So it's less about the fact that the theater box itself went from below grade to above grade. It's really about all the cost associated with it staying in a very costly, high-density environment. You know, our cost did not change that drastically, frankly, when we moved the theater. We really moved it for ergonomic reasons. From there, you know, we certainly anticipated receiving that theater tax to our benefit, frankly. And in full disclosure, we almost lost the theater. You know, as you know, there was a long period of time where we didn't have a theater. While we had backup theaters, this is really the concept that we wanted. So in order to keep them, we had to incent them. And so whether you look at it that we gave them the theater tax, or whether you look at it that, you know, we gave them a lower rent, we frankly ultimately gave them theater tax to say, this is, you know, your incentive to do the best you can, you get incentivized. So instead of us benefiting, they're motivated to do so.
Sure.
So it was really, it was frankly a market concession, as you indicated. But it's, you know, the cost structure is still high, predominantly driven by below-grade concrete construction. You know, this is, this is a, pretty much an almost all concrete construction project, considering the, the superstructure. But really between, so to reiterate again, it's really the cost of the theater itself and the structure below, and then also the fact that we, what we had to do to, to concess to keep them there.
Well, let me ask you this, if, if it was the will of the council or the will of the city that we chose to eliminate that theater tax, whether it's now or at some point in the future, what happens to that theater?
Well, I think it's an anticipated revenue on their part.
Okay.
So it's been built into their projections.
And the reason I point that out, and this is for general consumption, not just you guys, but other folks, I, I, just philosophically, for me, I have an issue subsidizing a particular business interest. And I understand that, and I've heard from others, that sometimes you have to, you know, give something up to get something that you want. I, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think that taxpayers effectively subsidizing the operation of one particular business interest just gives me concerns over the survivability of that business, once that 10-year guarantee is up. And the fact that if the economics have changed, and it's a $320,000 net tax that you guys get after the first 20, and then everything above, above that 340 cap, I guess, goes back to the city, I don't see us generating much revenue off of that. And frankly, I'm not, I don't see it as a, as a revenue stream that we need. And taxing our residents to use a theater, to me, is, it just, it causes me some concern. And so this'll be a conversation we'll certainly, we'll have to have at some point in the future. We won't solve it tonight. But if, if what you guys are indicating is that that theater signed a lease and only thought it could operate and survive to some extent based on the economics because of a tax that was passed by the city, I have, I have a concern, because I'm, I'm not one to, to really agree to, to raise taxes, especially for use and amenity.
I guess let's step in for a second, though. This was heavily debated a couple of years ago, and there was a lot of research done on it, which basically proved out that it is very, very common in theaters to have a theater tax, frankly. It's not atypical. I believe the precedent that we were following was actually with the State Theater. You know, the State Theater actually was that law that we carried over, where I think it was 10 cents for a ticket and a penny went to the, the original. It's a similar relationship here. And we looked at probably 20 theaters in the area, and it was very common. I think it's just, it's, and I don't think that there's, I don't think you have to look at, at the end of it, it fails. I think that in addition to the large $3 million investment that we're making, Studio Movie Grill is making a very large investment as well. So there's, to a certain degree, you could look at the net present value of that. And then as time goes on, less capital's involved. So I don't, I think that it's, it was a thoughtful process to allow us to finance it to a certain degree, a small, small, small portion of it, but it, it did allow for that theater to become more viable.
Okay. I, I just, I just want to voice my concerns in, in front of everyone here for, again, for general consumption. I, I can assure you that I want that theater to survive, but not at the expense of, of taxpayers subsidizing. But I understand all the discussion of the economics, and, and it was something that was passed before I was here, and I know that there are other components to that. But in, in any event, I, I think it's, it's kind of good to understand that there are some concerns if that tax goes away in terms of the operations of, of that theater. I think it's good for folks to understand that. And I'd skipped over one other, one other comment here, just related to the environmental comments. I looked at the shadow study that you guys had provided for, for the entire site, and I know there's this conversation that come up in a couple of boards and commissions, that the top of the theater is just a massive heat island. I mean, when you look at the shadow studies, I mean, it's exposed to light effectively all day. I know that causes concerns from an HVAC perspective, but when you've got that, that type of structure, that, that is an issue. One question I had is, could we cover that thing with solar panels and capture some of that, as opposed to just letting that portion of the site, which is part of the commercial, which mistaken, don't, correct me if I'm wrong, does not have the NGSV, not the lead component, but NGVS is only for the residential portion, correct? I mean, is there something that we can do with, with that to kind of two birds, one stone?
So we actually looked in, I looked into this. I had never heard of the heat island concept until that AA, was it, was it the AAB meeting? Yeah, it was the AAB meeting. So I do have my architect here who might be able to explain a little bit more. But the roofing system that we are using, it's a TPO roofing system, they have minimum qualif- But the roofing system that we are using, it's a TPO roofing system. They have minimum qualifications that they recommend to avoid this heat island impact. I believe it's a, it's called an SRI quotient. Don't ask me what it stands for.
The reflective index, right?
It's some kind of reflective.
I was just going to chime in that, you know, from lead and sustainability requirements, they like, one of the points is usually like 50 to 75% of the roof should be either green or have this high SRI value. And basically, it reflects the light, so it doesn't absorb it and doesn't create the heat.
Okay. So, so if it's not absorbing the heat, could we still capture some of that sun on top of it? I mean, did you guys think about that, putting solar panels? And I know that that, everything that we talk about, that we want to add on costs money. I get that.
Sure. So we, we have made a proffer from, it's in there, voluntary concessions from the get-go to assign roof space here to concentrate our mechanical units so that in the future, we are able to have solar panel built out. One of the things that came up in the environmental sustainability committee meeting was to further incentivize that, to actually create the conduit pathways, so that if solar panels are installed in the future, that they have a pathway to run through and you're not creating further damage. So we have added that to the voluntary concessions as well. So, so we do have the ability to put solar panels on. We have not engaged with that on this project this time. We have provided a roof product that has an SRI quotient that's far above what's required to minimize the heat island impact.
Okay. Just wondering if you, if you guys could take it a next step, not just prepare it, but, but actually put it together through power purchase agreement or something similar. Is that something you're willing to commit to?
Not at this time.
Okay. Something I think you should, should consider. That's a big blank canvas right there that is being hit by the sun on a regular basis. And I think a lot of people would be interested to see that component actually come to life as opposed to preparing at some point in the future. Excuse me, guys. I got a lot of questions here written down. Oh, one last question. For the affordable dwelling units, I saw a lot of mention of the word can. We can do this in terms of, we, we can prohibit folks under the age of 18 of living in those units. I, I saw a lot of legalese that was provided in terms of what we, we can and cannot do. But could you guys put into your voluntary concessions that we will?
Sure.
As opposed to can?
Sure.
Just very definitively say we will?
Yeah, I'm trying to read the actual language right now, but absolutely. I think the can was to say that the law allows you to do so.
If it's clear that we, if it's clear that we can do it and you guys will do it, let's say that we, that we will do it.
Absolutely.
I think that's, that's all I got.
All right. Other questions, comments? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, any vacation plans you have. To go to the beach this week, hereby canceled. Since the traffic guy is here, could I have, could we have a recitation of the traffic calming that's proposed for Grove Avenue?
I believe that the VCs, as they're currently structured, basically commit funds towards traffic calming on Grove Avenue in a form to be determined by, in combination with, with, with staff and the community. So those haven't been defined at this time.
Well, I can give a little bit more detail. I think what's proposed is three speed bumps on Grove Avenue. And then I think what we view as very important is the redesign of the WNOD crossing of Grove Avenue, where we're going to throttle the street down and give it a really strong gateway feel so that when you cross the trail and enter Grove Avenue, you feel very strongly that you're leaving a different zone, that you're entering a quiet residential zone. And we want the landscaping, want the street design to really send that signal. And that will be done by narrowing the street, but also, which will make it safer for the pedestrians and the bicyclists, but also, I think, set a good tone for, for Grove Avenue. So I think those are the main things we're doing.
That's great. That's kind of the answer I was looking for. Now, with respect to the alternate crosswalk, I know, looking at me, I don't seem to be the guy that naturally jaywalks, and I would never say anything to that effect. But since there are people here tonight that have already confessed to doing that, I'm wondering whether, in fact, that putting it in another place, the alternate crosswalk, what that, what that actually does with respect to, first of all, the studies on whether pedestrians actually use those things or they just naturally cross where they feel like crossing. And then I guess the other question is, if we put in a crosswalk, what is the liability created for the city? If we put a crosswalk, are we warranting, putting out a warrant that the crossing there is safe? Or is it, you know, crosswalk, cross at your own hazard? I, I don't know what, what it is. So, so maybe it's more than just a traffic opinion. It's traffic plus legal. Do you have any studies on the effect of putting some stripes in the middle of the road, what that does?
So whenever you are considering crosswalks in uncontrolled location, that's what this would be considered because there's no stop signs on the main line, there's no signals that would be installed here. So it's considered uncontrolled. The feds have issued guidelines. They're not standards, they're not regulations, but they're guidelines where when you have an uncontrolled crossing, you should consider what they consider safety countermeasures to best accommodate pedestrians and their safety. And those different measures are based on the speeds, are based on the traffic volumes, and they're based on the crossing distance themselves. And first and foremost, the, the number one necessity for uncontrolled crosswalks is visibility, both sight distance and illumination. And I think the concern with this, with the location that was approved before was the visibility, the sight distance, being able to see the crosswalk, as the video demonstrated. And I think the, the relocation, and there was an image that was provided, which showed the crosswalk being moved down to the, to the location just north of the West Fargo entrance. What that does, it does improve the visibility, but the, the federal guidelines do recommend a median refuge there because you're crossing four lanes at that location. And based on where that crosswalk location is provided, you wouldn't be able to have that refuge there. So again, you know, the guidelines indicate that, you know, this intersection by its nature make a crosswalk that would conform to those guidelines very difficult.
Hi, I'm Antoinette Isherwood with Walter Phillips. So I also wanted to just add that even at this relocated crosswalk area that we're showing here, what you have is a lot of, the intersection geometry is just not common. So a lot of the mid-block crossings that you see for where these guidelines are provided, it's also for, where I've seen, you know, where you have long stretches of straight road. I think the intersection and the geometry of this location with the turning movement from the bank, with the turning movement onto and coming from Grove Avenue, I know there was a lot of discussion that they didn't want, the neighbors from Grove Avenue didn't want to restrict that left turn, and there's the school buses that go through there. And so it's just the combination of all the different turning movements, plus all the activity that's going to be going on in the site. I think there's just going to be a lot of distraction at this intersection. And so even if we provide a crosswalk that has, you know, the lighting, the pedestrian lighting beacons, I think it's going to be dangerous for drivers coming, trying to get through the intersection at West and Broad and coming through Park and West, even though I agree that the vehicles might be traveling slower, to your point, Mr. Duncan, I do think that there's going to be a lot of activity going on, that there's just going to be distractions.
Well, I've been on Weston, and even though I've never seen many council people trying to pretend to be scuffle at that point in time, I have seen people cross. So again, it goes back to my question. From either a staff planning or legal perspective, if we do have an alternate crosswalk, any indication that this is where we think you ought to be crossing, does that create a liability for us going forward?
I, I would think that in general, your decisions about where to put crosswalks and things like that become, are, you're protected by sovereign immunity because there are governmental functions, which doesn't mean you want to ignore the safety, of course, of the pedestrians. But I, I think that in terms of strictly, could you be liable because you put a crosswalk in the wrong place? I think you would likely be protected from financial liability on that.
Okay. So here's what I suggest we do. It's been stated that as we come down to the ninth day of a 10-day process, that this is where the, the paper cuts increase in, in intensity. And, and once you get through this, I guarantee that you'll, you'll be doing a lot more smiling, Mr. Caldwell. I would, I would propose that we put in a 100K allowance going forward. We restudy this issue after the project's completed. And if it appears that we need to do something more, that 100K goes toward doing that. Something that's minimal with maximum effective, maximum effect. And if we don't need to do anything, then we give the money back to you.
So I, I will, and actually, I meant to bring this up earlier when the comment was addressed to us about, by Mr. Duncan, for a look back on the TDM. Not only will we do TDM reporting on our project as well, but I would like to remind that we do have a $50,000 allotment for post-development traffic study and improvements. So there is a $50,000 allotment already included just for things like that, to do a study.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about studying it.
Well, this is for traffic, this is study and improvements.
And improvements. So make it 100K. It's an extra 50K buffer that we'll give back to if we don't need to do anything. That's what I propose. Okay, great. Are we at a point where we can say we have clarity in the, I know this question's been asked before, in the active-adult language? I know you've explained it already, but I just want to make sure that we're not doing this on Friday.
Yes. I, I'm comfortable with the language that's in there. That requires that where the applicants agreed to put the provisions in the lease that prohibit residents under 18, and that those provisions will be shown to the city attorney and the city manager before they get any certificates of occupancy for the active-adult units, and that they have committed in the VCs that they will enforce those provisions.
Great. Thank you so much.
And to, and actually, real quick, Mr. Z, to address Mr. Littenhouse's concern, just reading the VCs, it does offer definitive language. Will, shall, not can or can. So just to.
I like shall. That's good.
Shall. Yeah, that's the proffer.
Perfect. I'm glad that, you know, just looking at the shadow study, that you've got so much white space on the roof. I fully expect that within a couple of years' time, after you finish, that we'll be able to have a citywide municipal utility that, that takes full advantage of that. You've promised to clear as much roof as you can. That goes back to Mr. Littenhouse's point. I know that this point, panels is something that you would be reluctant to commit to. I'm not asking to do that. You've got the space, you've got the conduits. The only thing lacking here is that additional room in, in the electrical space for potential inverters, controllers, and sensor. And so you just need to make that a little bit bigger. So you need to put that in VCs as well. I don't see anything here for the trees. They've asked you for 30K. Quite frankly, they wanted more, but I was able to convince them that, you know, let's go for the lowline fruit. So it's that 30K they asked for to go to Stormwater Fund. I think planning has the language on that. Before we go to construction, you know, I live on a street where sometimes quads line up at 7:00. Actually, they're, they're there at 6:30, but since they're not allowed to begin construction, they sit and idle. Nothing like a string of quads waiting for me to walk out by front door, to walk my dog and have them rumble past. And, you know, these guys are trying to get to the worksite. We don't want to hear from people on Park West Street, Grove Avenue, obviously, that your quads are parked. Man, if this thing gets permitted, you're going to be doing a lot of demolition, and these quads need to be somewheres. So I urge you to think very carefully about where these quads are going to park. I know you'll solve that problem. Because I'll, I'll give them your cell phone number. Okay, going to the architecture. You know, first of all, let me just say that I'm really pleased that you've explored the, the full palette of shapes, placements, a, a way to make it, express the uses behind it. I like the palette of colors that you've used. It's quite frankly better than you've done in the mosaic, but nothing bad about the mosaic. It's just better. Although I'm not sold on Maestri and brick and mortar being a, a replacement for cementitious panel. People have talked about, I think there is a place for, for cementitious panel. And I think what you're moving toward is, is using that, not so much to infill all the spaces, but they become more accent at this point. You've got, you know, cast stone, you've got a lot of finistration, you've got coping, you've got fiberglass reinforced copings, all that stuff. You know, it's, that's, that's laudable. I'm still stuck on that West and Broad corner, which is.
Yeah, I'll pull it up.
And we are, you know, almost the last hour of, of day nine. So as I'm, I'm seeing this tonight, the first thing I thought of was, you know, that really wants to be metal in that corner. Some sort of embossed metal, some galvalume, maybe something that goes through some texture changes over time. Yeah, it's more expensive than cementitious, but it's your corner. It's your corner. I, I think, you know, people say, I want to meet you at the corner where the metal panels are. Or something like that. So if you could just look at doing that, doing something more of that corner, that, that then expresses the richness that I think is encompassed in this project. I think that would make, and use it judiciously where you can, maybe even on the, on the townhome side. We've got more of that grade material, which I think wants to be metal. I think you'd certainly come a long ways toward getting, tilting the balance toward getting the votes that you need. So I think it's kind of a, oh, the, the part that faces the church. You've got some big flowers there, right?
I'm sorry. Say that again?
You've got some big flowers?
Yes. Uh, it's, it's.
Church okay with that?
I'm sorry.
No, it's not in any picture. It's just, I don't think it's in any of these. What is there now?
What kind of plannings are there now?
No, no. What, what's on the side facing the church?
This is the side facing the church. So that, that's the trees.
You've got trees.
There's a, there's a.
The mural.
What's above? The mural.
The mural. We're talking about the artwork.
We don't have that elevation.
You've got a mural done by Muro or?
I'm not sure if I have that. It's in the animation. You can kind of see it there and fade it down in the background.
Yeah, where are those things? Feathers?
Well, it's just a placeholder. So that, this will be, we'll engage the community in a process to share our thoughts on what this artwork will be. We've discussed this with staff, and it'll be an amendment.
You guys have a lot of experience in, you know, artwork done by semi-famous people, right? You know, Arja's the mural there, the, the, the Tuscanese village is done by a famous artist that also has done a similar mural in Arlington and also in, in Little Washington. I mean, you've got lots of resources here. So when you bring it back finally and say, do you like this? It can't look like feathers.
We'll put that in the VCs.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm done. Thank you.
All right. What else, Dave? Mr. Snyder?
Okay. Thank you very much. The one non-delegable element of all this for the city council is the finances. So I want to focus on that. Can you turn to page, or let's see, page 12 of 28, line 456? Because I want to understand this chart, and frankly, I, I don't at this point. So we see that there was a reduction in the positive fiscal impact, a fairly significant reduction when we went from the hotel to the age-restricted residential units. And then we did the apples-to-apples. This whole chart. This whole chart needs a whole lot more explanation, by the way, because it's almost impenetrable. It's useful, I think, where you're trying to go, but it needs a whole lot more interpretation. And then we do preliminary here, and we're in May 2018, and we've got 818 to 1.7. And then in June, we go, we add almost a half more to the lower range, and a significant amount to the upper range. So my question is, so I understand the numbers, where did that fairly significant increase in net fiscal impact come from?
So Ms. Witzman will come and answer the questions, and sort of the short answer is, and in terms of the updated data that we have on pupil generation is the main reason for that change, but let me let Ms. Witzman speak to that.
Well, and there's also an Attachment 6 that I think helps explain it.
Okay, good.
But it's basically the methodology by which we're projecting the pupils, and it has changed. When we ran this back in 2015, the lowest fiscal impact result was based on .33 pupils per unit. Then progressively, as we determined how many pupils there were in the 301 West Broad project and the Lincoln project, and I think out of the 719 pupils there, there are 40, I'm sorry, 719 units there, there are 46 pupils, which I think comes out to a .09 as opposed to a .33. So when we got to insight, we said, "Well, we think the .33 projection is probably too high, based on the experience that we're seeing." So what we did was we took the schools' pupils-per-unit projections, they do an analysis that they recalibrate every year, and that came up most recently, I think, with 46 pupils. So based on, if it's a one-bedroom, the ratio might be a .1. If it's a two-bedroom, based on experience, what we see in the units. So it came up to a .46. We said to, "Give us a fudge factor, we're going to increase that 46 pupils by 50%, which gets us to 64.5 pupils."
Uh huh.
So that's the range. When we ran it back in 2015, we came up with this .33, 106 pupils. That's a difference of like 46 pupils times $15,000 per pupil. That's the big difference, it's $620,000.
So there was no magical increase in commercial tax generation?
No.
The increase comes merely from, or totally from, changes in our model?
Well, not totally. We did give them additional credit for meals and sales tax generation in the movie theater, because we badly underestimated those to begin with. We were extremely conservative, we didn't have comparables, because we don't have a theater here. We got a consultant to help us with that. We didn't know who the movie theater operator was, we now know that. We had lots of additional information, so we added a little bit of extra revenue there, and they increased their restaurant square feet from 20,000 to 25,000 square feet. So those are the three adjustments.
Right, and what, how much was the more positive financials from May to June, the result of our modeling changes, and how much were the result, as you said, of increases in square footage and sort of that sort of thing? You don't need to answer this tonight, but you understand where I'm going, which is, I really need to understand the financials here.
Right.
And what I'm hearing is that if we're right on the student generation count, at a lower number, we'll get that, but if we're wrong, it's really being generated by our models and student generation, and not so much driven by the commercial activity. That's what I understand.
I think that's accurate to say.
Okay, that's very useful. I think, I like this chart, but I think we need to explain what the assumptions are more effectively.
Yeah, we can do that.
Because this is a significant project, obviously, so. Okay, so the next question is, how many apartment units? We've just talked about commercial tonight. How many apartment units are we talking about? And what's the percentage of the project that's residential versus, versus commercial?
There's 394 total apartments.
How many?
394.
394.
320.
What's the largest project, Mr. City Manager, we've approved a number of apartments? Any one project?
Approved or been built? But I'll go with built. The 301 West Broad had 284 apartments.
Right.
The Lincoln had 230, about 230 apartments. Those are the two largest to date.
Okay, and how about West and Broad?
West and Broad was at...
290, was it? Something, 293, something?
Just under 300, that's correct.
So, and we've, we're, part of this project is 394 apartment units. Okay, I just, I just think that needs to be remembered. And what's the percentage of the build-out that's apartments versus, versus commercial?
There's a slide in the chart that shows how this project stacks up commercial-to-residential ratio versus other approved projects. This is at about 17%, plus or minus half a percent.
17% commercial.
17%, which is in line with virtually all the other approved mixed-use developments in the city.
Okay. So it makes then the commercial tax yield here a pretty important factor, at least from our decision-making, because I think we're in the business here of supporting developments like this in special exception in order to generate tax, net tax revenue. So it makes the commercial generation pretty significant. So could we go back to slide number two in the slide series? Because I want to, I want to get at how we're actually going to assure that we get the commercial tax generation that we're talking about, because it is so important.
Slide number two was a timeline, I believe.
No, yeah, the timeline.
The timeline?
Yeah.
There you go.
There we go.
Yep.
So if we go down to the construction timeline, we have people that are going to be moving into the apartments before the commercial is occupied.
That is correct.
Right. So how many of the apartments, in other words, is it 100% apartment occupancy before we potentially could see a dollar from the commercial? I'm talking about worst case here, not everyone's good intent, but worst case.
The voluntary concessions say that we have to have the, actually, I'd have to clarify what voluntary concessions say in line with the theater. I think the theater has to be started construction, their tenant improvements prior to our final receipt of the certificate of occupancy, and that all of the rest of the commercial space has to be finished as well, from the cold dark shell perspective that we've already detailed.
Yeah, cold dark shell, it calls to mind certain B-movies, anyway. So we're really, we're really kind of going on faith here, that what we do know is we're going to get 394 apartments, more apartments than we've ever built in any project before. And the whole net fiscal revenue relies upon our model, and it relies upon full commercial occupancy, which we know is not going to happen before the apartments. We may get some, but there's no guarantee, because the timeline that you've provided it shows the apartments are going to be occupied before the commercial is ready.
Let's, let me object for a second. To have, to have retail 50% leased before you start construction is exceptional.
I appreciate that. From a developer's standpoint, I appreciate that.
So that's, so...
Yeah.
That's, that's an exceptional start.
You say leased, are those leases capable of being canceled?
They're guaranteed by the corporations behind them. So they, I mean, anything, like a company would have to go bankrupt, right? So it's, these are corporate-backed leases, these are high-credit, high-net-worth organizations that we've selected, so I know we've provided one, we can frankly provide the other, but there's a lot of guarantee behind that 50% being there no matter what. Secondarily, as Joe mentioned earlier, I'm, the enthusiasm is high, I'm confident that we'll be approximately, if not 100%, in that 90% to 100% leased range before the first space is opened. That's not something I could commit to in a VCs, that's just not a financeable commitment. So I'm not, the, so the question is really not about the physical occupancy of it, I think your question is one of timing, right? And I'm, the time difference between the first unit being delivered and the commercial space being opened, do you remember how long that is?
Well, the first commercial space will, a portion of that first commercial space will be available for tenant improvements.
Available, but they're build-out as?
They're build-out as six months after receipt of the, at least at the lease that we have in place right now.
So that's the, so that's just, that's the worst-case scenario. The theater is the long lead-time build-out, that the one, that's the one that takes the most time, if you will.
So from the date of the apartments being occupied till the time of the theater actually there generating revenue, what's that period of time?
About six, about six months.
About six months.
Six months, yeah. There, the other uses, just to be clear, the other uses will generally have a shorter build-out period of time, more like three months.
Okay.
So it's not like the theater gets built, and then months or years later, the other spaces get built. They're all kind of being built at a similar timeframe. And then, so the inline spaces, the non-theater spaces, will go from a, from the unfinished condition to, once the TI's go in, about three months later, they should be operational.
And just to elaborate on that, that's, it's incentivized in the lease for them to begin business as well. Their rent commencement is tied to, like Sean was saying, a time period, whether it's three months for a smaller tenant, six months for a larger tenant. From the time they receive the space, they have three to six months to begin paying rent, which means that they're incentivized to get open in that timeframe as well. So the worst case is six months, if only it was the theater, which there's going to be more.
Okay, I understand that these answers are very helpful, because it helps flesh out...
Sure.
...the notion of, I think we want what you're proposing to bring, so we want to get some degree of certainty to the extent possible that we'll actually get that. So that's why I'm going into these. So when you said 50% leased, 50% of the square footage, 50% of the potential tax revenue, what 50% are we talking about?
Approximately 50% of the square footage.
Okay. Of the commercial square footage?
Of the commercial square footage, yes.
The, let's see, the next question I had, which is a request for the package, do we have in the package here a listing of the questions raised by the neighborhood and the answers? We've gotten some very detailed emails, people have spent a lot of time writing questions and expressing concerns. And do we have a, have we charted out the neighborhood's concerns and the answers to those concerns? And can we do that? I think that would be a very helpful communications tool.
You're right, there's been a lot of correspondence on this project, and what our work as staff typically is geared towards is to serving the boards and commissions, and then responding to individual questions as best we can, but the majority of our work is directly with the boards and commissioners appointed by the council. I would need to get back with you in terms of what that volume would look like, I think it's going to be large, though.
I'm not, I think you can sort of summarize the issues, but I think the neighborhood in particular spent a lot of time on this. The neighborhood at one point got behind it, and then became suspicious, and then raised additional questions. And it would be very helpful for everyone concerned if we could lay out what their concerns have been, just because it really is an extraordinary amount of well-thought-out commentary, and I think it deserves, you know, some summary answers if nothing else. I'm not saying you have to repeat everything, but I think that would be a very helpful tool for us to communicate to the neighborhood. All right? So I'd ask you to consider that as part of the package. Let's see. So getting into a more detailed point, the folks on Grove Avenue have raised an issue, and this is more a city issue than a developer issue, about the treatment of that area where the bike path is. There's a large area there for the bike path, and they viewed that as sort of a screen, if you will, for Grove Avenue, and I know a number of folks have asked about what's going to become of that, what's that's going to look like, et cetera. Finally, in terms of traffic, because we all hope this will be successful, and we hope that it'll attract traffic certainly during the performance times. And oh, by the way, is the theater capable of other performance besides movies?
It's a great question. I mean, it is possible for them to host events in terms of where you could have a company gathering. I know that we've done that actually at Mosaic. Birthday parties, that kind of stuff, I have not, I've not had that question with them. You know, we've spoken about their community engagement and having community events there, but in terms of a play or anything like that, it's going to be a movie theater structure. I don't know what they've done in the past.
Generally, again, like Joe said, we did this at Mosaic. It does, theaters do tend to get used off-hours for conferences, right? You know, we've done PowerPoint presentations and gatherings and things like that. The theater space itself is not set up with platforms, obviously, for that, it's more, I mean, I think everything is pretty audiovisual-based.
Okay, so is it possible to use it as conference space? Because that would be a great addition.
We can confirm, we can confirm, but I know that, you know, we're part of Mosaic, and we use the, we have to pay, but we've used the Angelica space often for conferences.
Okay, yeah. So one other question, which is really a transportation question. Route 7 is already highly congested during certain parts of the day, and West is already fairly busy. With the improvements, and there are, there are improvements, do we have the capability of handling the traffic volume if the commercial elements here are as successful as we hope they'll be? I mean, is the capacity there? It looks to me like we're already overcapacity, which is not, you know, so I'm interested in the overall capability of the transportation network.
So at the moment, the intersection Northwest and West Broad is operating at level of service E during the...
P?
Level of service E, correct.
Right, and what's the worst level?
Level of service F is considered failing. Level of service E is considered at or close to capacity. We forecast that under background conditions, without our development, it would remain at an E in the future. With our development, with the improvements that we are proposing, including the physical improvements at the intersection Northwest and West Broad, we will maintain a level of service E at that location.
You'll maintain E?
Correct.
Okay. Now, does that assume what period of the day, and does that assume that people are going to, like, if you had people going to the theater, it's what, 750 seats now? So what happens to the service level when that occurs?
The traffic analysis that we provided evaluates what we call the commute peak hours, which are the, in the morning, the afternoon, during the weekday, and that is based on the peak volumes that we count out on the roads. And the way that the, and the way that our forecasts are run is that we assume full utilization of the land uses during those times. So, yes, the short answer is, we forecast it for the worst case.
And the worst case would be 750 people going to the movie theater during commuting hours?
That's correct.
I think the good news is that's probably unlikely to happen. Okay. All right, that, that's important, because it occurred to me that there are so many parts of the city where we are absolutely at, at a very high level of congestion already, and a couple hundred cars in our ordinary circumstance would mean much, but when you're already at, you know, at E, you don't want to get, I think some of our regional highways are at G and H. I think we had to invent new, new categories, H standing for something else, too, but yeah.
I think it's fair to point out as well, this is a mixed-use development, and we certainly anticipate that there will be a good bit of internal synergy here. When folks go to the theater, they'll want to have a meal, so you're not necessarily getting a person driving in for one use, driving out, then coming back for a different use. So there's definitely some of that that comes into play as well, as well as the residential components that feed into that.
Okay. And finally, why, why all apartments and not some or all condos?
Well, I mean, frankly, we are a multifamily rental company. That's the transparent answer. It's our core business. The product type, the quality of it, is built such that if it were to be converted by us or someone else in the future, it is capable of being a condominium, and I mean that the quality of construction is that, with sound attenuation, with finishes and quality. Also, a project of this size, a condominium does require a significant amount of pre-sales, but that would be a bit of a feigned answer, seeing as how that our core strategy is, is that of rental. So, I mean, that's frankly, it's... So, I mean, that's, that's frankly, it's, it's been our, what we wanted to do, the original market rate was obviously all rental. Part of the challenge, when we were looking at eliminating the hotel use, was we failed at delivering at what we wanted to bring with the, with the hotel not showing up. By keeping the age-restricted component, the use that's in front of you tonight as rental, it would be therefore something that we would control, something that we could deliver upon in 100% certainty. So between our, what our core competencies are, what our risk tolerance is, but in addition to our desire to be able to deliver on a complete $200 million investment, we kept it as rental versus for sale.
Okay. And one other question. When would you, let's assume that we stick with the schedule that's been laid out here, when would you break ground?
It, we're, best guess is late September at this point in time.
Late September of 2018?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just one quick one to the staff on attachment number seven. Could you just add a column that lists the unit numbers in each of the, this would be now the 10th mixed-use development we've done, just so we don't have to go rooting around like we just did, trying to remember how many are in each one? That would be a nice document to be able to call up, because it's helpful to see the size of the acreage, too. This would be the second-largest consolidation of properties for the total acreage of 4.3 acres that we've done on any of the 10 mixed-use projects.
All right, I've got a few, a few comments, a few questions. Let me start with a question for staff, probably. I seem to recall in the VCs, maybe I've read it incorrectly, but the idea that the city would, could convert onsite affordable units to cash contribution, I seem to recall that that was at year 20. Is that, did I read that incorrectly? Or is there just one period, like an option period, that's only in year 20 that we could do that?
So there's two periods when we could do it. First, at the beginning, and then at year 20, I think the idea is that there's, that's probably a refinance period, and so that would be the other window for us to convert the units to cash.
Is that your desire to have it only at year 20? I mean, I guess for me, you may refinance this multiple times, depending on where interest rates are heading and the like. So I'm not sure if year 20 is a bright line from, you know, tomorrow or next week. Is it truly a bright line for you?
It's not. We're flexible on that.
So, I mean, I guess I might suggest that from the city's side, I understand certainly how you would want advanced notice, that it wouldn't be something that just sort of happens, but I wonder if we could just have that as a rolling number with maybe two years' notice or something like that, so you guys would have enough time to roll people in and out if that were the case, as opposed to solely waiting, you know, two decades to, to convert over if we decided to do that. If you could maybe just give some thought to whether we can have some rolling thing that gives enough advanced notice so nobody's caught flat-footed?
No, appreciate that.
Okay. So I'm going back to architecture. I appreciate the work you've done. You've certainly done a fair amount of it. I, I do still have a few comments about it. One, like some of my colleagues, I'm not a fan of cementitious board. To me, it is a lesser quality of material as opposed to metal or masonry. And so I would encourage you to consider changing over your cementitious board to, again, metal or masonry, particularly at the corner. I think the corner is so prominent, it really is highly visible, and it really is the gateway in, in some ways to, you know, a portion of our city at least. And so I would ask you to reconsider your use of cementitious board at that intersection in particular. I would say as well, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but I'm not sure the gray works with the yellow, in my mind, but maybe I'll leave that to others. But I would ask you maybe to take a second look at that. Also, even as you come in on, from, I guess, East Broad to West Broad, as you're coming west down Broad Street, the big wall that butts St. James kind of has a feel to me that it looks like it's waiting to butt up another building, which is not going to happen because St. James, as a church, has been here for, I don't know how many years, probably 100 years, likely to be here for the next 100 years as well. And so I might give some thought as to try to add in some more articulation. Yeah, it's a fairly flat wall, look, kind of reads to me like it's waiting for the other side of the building to be developed, which is just not going to happen, given that this is a long-term church holding. And so maybe some thought as well, maybe that could be a little bit more articulation. With respect to the six-foot-clear sidewalk areas, are you suggesting that the six-foot would only be necessary where there'd be outdoor seating?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So can we add that to your condition so that the condition just says it's 10-foot clear unless and only in those places there's outdoor seating? What I don't want to do is start eroding our 10-foot-clear width so that it becomes, well, it could be six-foot anywhere. We want to put a, you know, a pole here, we want to put a, a guardrail or whatever. And that seems to be what's happened in our cities. We end up with a fire hydrant or other things, and so it's 10 feet becomes six feet.
So just to clarify, it does say, however, in instances where outdoor dining is to be located, then six feet is allowed.
Okay, maybe only in instances where
Okay, sure.
It's small matter, but I do feel pretty strongly about it. I would say in general as well, I think we should bring that ordinance amendment to council. This is one of the recommendations of the Streetscape Task Force, that we do create some indentations in the building, ground floors of building, to allow outdoor seating without impinging on the, the 10-foot clear width. With respect to bike share, maybe this is towards the city manager, so they're agreeing to pay the operating costs in perpetuity. How about the capital cost for the installation? How is that going to work?
And I think what we say is for the life of the project or for the life of the program, because the word perpetuity, the city attorney does not like.
Sure.
The, the capital cost, because we've already received the grant for it, for administrative purposes, we believe that the most efficient way to roll this system out is with those grant funds. And so the request then is to sustain that program into the future with the developer contribution.
So, but we're going to roll that out supposedly in the next couple of months. This project probably won't be ready, I'm guessing, for 24 to 36 months at, once you break ground.
We have, we have two phases of rollout, so I think that second phase will be aligned with this project.
Okay. And is it going to be in public right away or within, inside their building, the bike share station?
It's going to be where it is designated on the CDP, is on Park, real close to the Park Avenue-West Street intersection.
So on Public Street or?
Public Street, yes.
Okay. All right. I would say with respect to this discussion about crosswalks, it's a fairly avid walker. I do have concern. I get what you guys are saying, and that there ain't a great solution probably to be had for this, but I do feel that people are going to want to cross around Grove and that they're going to do it anyway, because that's what people do, you know? And they just sort of wait to scoot across. And so I don't know what the answer is. I'm a little concerned about, we're not going to do anything. I get it. But I also feel like we kind of need to do something. So I, I don't know what the right answer is. I think at a minimum, it would be good to escrow the money that you were going to spend on a crosswalk, and if we're not going to be able to decide it now, at least have the money. So if we decide we want to put it in, then the funds are available. But I guess I would probably err on the side of putting a crosswalk in, maybe at the Wells Fargo site, or at least there's some decent sightlines. I suspect there's going to be a lot of cars stacking as well, so that'll create somewhat of a barrier, at least going out to, to, you know, the main street, to Broad Street. But anyway, just a thought. Let's, let me ask you, the, above the townhouses, as you call them, the townhouses, there's a setback, and then there's the wall, which I guess is, is it the backside of the?
Theater.
Yeah. So what is the bulk plan angle? Like, where is that seen from and how does that look?
Unfortunately, I don't have the exhibit I can bring in for next time, but you, if you're standing on that sidewalk, even across Park, we have the signline that you can't see.
So even on the other side of Park, you're not going to see the?
Correct.
Okay.
The town, just to be clear, we showed in last one where the townhome peak elevation prevented you through the bulk plan of seeing the theater.
And so that's from Park. Is the, the townhomes visible from whatever that field is, you know, kind of across, diagonally across as well? I know that Park is
Sure.
is what they're on, but you can probably see them as well from the other side.
Yeah. Clearly, at some point, I, maybe the, what we can look is that, at what point?
Go back one if you could. Please. Yeah, so what is that material then, just for the, the white material on the back?
The material on the theater on that side.
Cementitious.
Okay. Okay.
Cementitious with, with, I'm sorry, with the feather design being the artwork that carries around, too. So there is an accent of the artwork there from when you can see it.
And the bay windows are what? The cementitious as well?
That is correct.
Okay. Again, I guess my comment would carry through, metal or something, certainly been my preference. You did bring a material board, we appreciate that. Any chance you could maybe circulate it around as we're finishing up our conversation?
[inaudible]
This is a question for city manager. Where Grove is throttled back with the crosswalk, the bike, you know, bike lane or whatever you want to call it, the bike cross, I seem to recall that it seemed like it only throttled one side of the street. It wasn't like kind of a narrow throat, even throating on both sides? Was that, is that the case or did I just misread the drawing?
My belief is, is this is a double throttle down so that it basically, just one side?
Why, why is it you all just did one side? It just seemed very strange to me. Why don't you just leave it, we'll walk around. Yeah. What's that?
Mr. Mayor, you're losing.
[laughing]
Ah, there you go.
Is that the, is that the yellow?
That, that's a non-yellow, yellow.
Okay. So it's not really yellow, it's more of a?
I'll never watch.
Is that the color of the senior building?
Is that the iron spot, whatever?
So that's the senior building?
That's correct.
Why don't you take us through, if you want, real quickly, just take us through what, what colors were?
Thank you for recognizing reality, Mayor.
Okay, I'm in.
Thank you for recognizing reality.
I'm Eric Lehman from WDG. Sort of the main building on, well, the
Can I make a request to just put the picture up?
Pop it on the screen as well, we can just
So that we can point to what?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so the, so the east facade, there's actually three different bricks. There is a lot of detail, I know.
Didn't read it.
Also, these views are terribly low resolution. If you look at these, you know, with proper resolution, there is a great deal of detail. So that end facade is primarily a rich blend of three bricks. And then it steps out, and, and when it steps out, we, we take a single one of those bricks or blends, but there's variety and, and there is some, some planar changes. And then right at the middle, where we have the window, we were using this dark iron spot brick, and it, and we're doing it in a rusticated way, so there's shadow lines. Every third brick steps out, so there's, and there's also two different precast colors. So there's cast stone, the white is cast stone, and also at the windows, there is a, a cast stone, which is more compatible with, with this color range, you know? So it's, it's very rich. It's, it is challenging because we're on a property line, which limits us to like 15% glazing, and we've absolutely maxed it out. And you can do blanked-out glazing. I think you can really see it quickly, so we're, we're trying to work to create as, as much presence as we can with it. And, and I think we've accomplished a great deal in the past couple of months, and, and, you know, we, we appreciate getting set a push to do better. I, I think, you know, for the first time, it really becomes a tower. It's symmetrical, it's very, it's, it's a static facade in a positive way. So as you see it coming up, it has a lot of presence, and that, and that tower kind of balances out the tower as we're coming into the project at, at Founder's Avenue. So, so the next building in, we'll just, right, right there, you know, so, so the, the building is, as we're moving, as we're moving west, it's, it's a combination of these two bricks. You know, we, we kind of picked these out as, as kind of, you know, familiar with, with the old Falls Church, so, so we're layering that. Again, some of the bricks are going kind of haywire on the, with a low res, and, and we have some, again, most of our fiber cement panels, we're, we're using it in a couple different ways, and, and this is not, some of the detailing really isn't even quite on, on these perspectives. You can see it on that, kind of that bridge area over the parking entrance. With the fiber cement, we're doing it two ways. We're doing it sort of as, as a board and batten. So rather than just being totally flat with, with joints, we, we have areas, panelized areas, and then, and then battening. So the idea is it looks kind of like wood frame, you, if it's done right, and it is a painted surface, you know, but, but you're not looking at a lot of attachments and stuff. So it has a certain amount of, of detail. We're using it that way. We're also using it generally at the tops of the buildings with, with just a, a joint, so that'd be sort of similar to a, a metal look. That's what we're trying to do with it. The, the, the corner building, yeah, is this, it's, it's, it's quite a rangy brick, and I don't know what color you, you know, you call it. I, I won't dare because it will
Sense.
But, you know, it's, I, I, again, one, one of the issues with a, with a project like this is, you know, is to create, you know, both, both variety and continuity, you know, and, and a lot of the materials are repeating, so a lot of these same materials we're using, you know, here. This is our triangle building, so, you know, the building on, you know, on Northwest where we're, we're having our crosswalk issue, it's, it's generally this color. All, all the, the base of the building is, that's all oversized masonry, so we haven't really finalized what that product is, but, you know, we're trying to find a range of compatible materials and, and textures, but these are, they're masonry, so they're that same four inches deep, but they're, you know, they're four by 24, or eight by 24, or 12 by 24. Again, it's sort of, it's kind of a more of a limestone look. And then the townhouses are, begin to repeat things, you know, so six or seven townhouses in three different palettes. So we, we use this palette, you know, for one townhouse, this palette, you know, and, and then this. So again, they're repeated, so I think that creates a certain amount of continuity as, as you get around the whole project. But that is, that's it. So, so the fiber cement, we try to keep it to the, you know, to the tops of the buildings or, or sort of away, you know, that, that big corner is sort of a prominent area at, at, at the, yeah, at West and Broad. And, and I, I think we've used, you know, a great deal of fiber cement in areas that aren't, that aren't really seen by the public. We have an internal courtyard where the public doesn't go at all, that, that, you know, was final, and now it's fiber cement. And the courtyard, you know, to the west, which would be really very hard to see in the street. So I think when we look at percentages of materials, that kind of throws it off, because those are almost like, you know, besides the windows, 100% fiber cement, just trying to balance the budget and, you know, put the money in the right place.
Sure. Well, I appreciate your explanation, and I think it does certainly show more than some of the elevations or perspectives do, so thank you very much for, for that. I would still kind of, I think my, my comment still stands about cementitious board, trying to minimize particularly at the corner, but I do thank you very much for coming up. With respect to the throttling of Grove Street or Grove Avenue, it seemed, when I looked at the drawings, that it was just happening on one side. Could you discuss that?
Yes. And so, sorry, I was trying to look back since we did look at these designs several years ago, that we were, there are a lot of existing utilities in the road on the other side. And so in discussions with the park authority and with staff, we agreed that the goal and the intent was to try to minimize the width of the road, so we are meeting that, but only doing it on that one side. So it's, it's their existing utilities.
I got to say, it really looks weird. I mean, when you look at it, to see one side kind of pulling in but not doing it down the middle. I mean, I guess I would ask staff to take another look at that and make sure that's consistent with what we want to do with the road, but I don't have it in front of me right this instant, but it, it did seem kind of strange to basically pull the road together but only use one side of it to do that, as opposed to kind of splitting the difference. So anyway, could you maybe take a look at that during this next couple, couple days? Let me see what else I've got here as far as questions. With respect to the water feature, it sounds very exciting. It sounds like some kind of sprinkler thing. Is that what you guys are thinking about?
It's very similar to the, the water fountain at Mosaic. If you've seen the water feature at Mosaic.
I gotta say, I don't recall it.
Yeah, no worries. So integral jets, flush jets in the ground with pavers so that they can pop up at different heights, different speeds. There's lights in them, kids can play in them, or you can court them off, and it just functions as a fountain.
Can you commit to that in your VCs? Is it something, some kind of description of that? that?
So, it's, what's committed to is what is in our CDP submission, and that's what's in our submission.
Yes, that, yes, it is committed to in the VCs.
I tell you what happened, I think, I can't remember the name of the project, or the Mad Fox, is that seemed to be kind of promised much more than the little fountain that ended up turning up there, so-
You all described the number of jets at Mosaic is 13, and this one has eight, is that right, at the A/B meeting?
Adam Steiner, I think, did describe it that way, yes.
Okay, so.
I would echo the comments about making sure Park Avenue, the folks who live there don't have parking problems, that we get a parking plan for them in the right timeframe, so that they're not overwhelmed with parking of any kind from this project. Let me see what else I've got. I think that's it. Again, I want to thank you all, I know it's been a long process, frankly, for everybody, for the community and staff as well, but you all have also spent a lot of time, obviously, working on the most recent comments, I appreciate it, and that's all I've got right now, is there any?
Just one other question, so we've all agreed now that it is Founder's, no apostrophe, no, it's Founder's Row.
Founder's Row.
It's not one Founder's Row, it's not many Founder's Row, it's just Founder's-
Founder's Row.
Okay, great, that's good, let's just all make sure that, we all know that, and what is the picture of the person up above on the end? Am I, is this a joke that I'm not in on?
Is that a kid playing?
It's an indigenous person.
It's Mayor Tartar.
I thought it was, I was going to say, I think he's got a little more hair than he should have. Well, okay, all right, but the, but the project is not named after him in particular, because then that would be apostrophe S, so it's, if you're going to put pictures of Founder's, put multiple Founder's.
Correct.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, are there any other comments or questions before we leave this topic? Listen, thanks again for coming out-
Thank you.
And we'll see you soon, thanks very much. All right, so we are going to have a closed session here shortly, before we go into closed session, is there any comments or questions, or are there any comments, questions about schedule, schedule requests? Ms. Hardy?
I wanted to follow up on the, I think I, we mentioned it maybe in previous meetings about where we are with parking, so this morning I convened kind of an informal task force, task force of hosts representing between the EDA, the CECT, the Planning Commission was looped in, staff was involved, talking about kind of parking improvements in downtown, and so I think we, the group's recommendation was to kind of formally charter ourselves as a task force, so we can make recommendations to council, we talked about some kind of low-hanging fruit, the next set of ideas that we can go after, and so I wanted to make sure that the rest of council was aware of it, see if you had any thoughts or concerns before we move forward with that, and then if not, we can work with staff on the next steps.
All right, so you'd like to form a task force on parking?
Yes.
Okay, what do people think about that?
I support that, I think it's a great idea, it's probably the third task force on parking and towing we've had.
I'm going to try again, though.
Good luck.
Four times the charm.
So, if it's a task force, it's just, the only problem with any task force is that it means that it's another excuse for two people not to be able to talk to each other, because then we're, you know, a committee. Is there, is there a way around that?
I don't necessarily need the formality, but I think what the group was recommending is we wanted to make sure there was some dedicated focus on it, that we had appropriate staff time working on it, and then council would also hold us accountable to actually coming up with some ideas and recommendations, so I think anything that can accomplish those three things, we don't need to be formal, that doesn't need to happen, but-
Okay, so, as you would construct it, probably would only have one of, one of every animal, so that you wouldn't have two or three of anybody, right?
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we let staff take a look at this and try to come up with some structure, and would you be willing to do that, Mr. Shields, and do you have a parking task force, maybe some of the businesses downtown, different boards and commissions, but not so many folks that it's unwieldy and overly crowded, but could you come up with a stab at a structure, and then bring it back to us in the coming weeks, and we'll figure it out? All right.
One thing I just wanted to put on the radar, that the group was really enthusiastic about going after, given that we might have some painting work going on, is being able to paint our public spaces distinguishing colors, so that it's very, it's just different from all the other spaces, especially in that 100 block of Park Avenue where our spaces, the public spaces are mixed in with the private ones, and I think it's, there's a sign proliferation issue, but I think if we painted them, say, green or blue, something maybe like the shade of green that matches our bike racks, that would make them very apparent that they're public spaces, and reduce the confusion in there, and so that we viewed as a, you know, quick hit, relatively low cost, low risk, and a big improvement, I think, from a parking perspective.
All right, well, that's recommendation number one. Why don't we go ahead and, go ahead, Mr.?
Other scheduled question, am I, are we done?
Yes.
Parking, okay, I just, I think I read the schedule showing that we would meet on the previously sacrosanct fifth Monday of October, October 29th, rather than move the work session when we're at VML to Wednesday of that week, is that, is that where we ended up last time we talked about this? Is that staff's preference, or?
The city clerk did send out a note alerting the council of that possibility, we would like to reach closure on that issue, so what's proposed is that we would not meet on October 1st, instead, we would have the work session then on the 8th, and then just proceed through the rest of the month, because there is a fifth Monday, so we'd be taking our fifth Monday on the first Monday.
Have it on the screen.
Sounds like I could remember that schedule.
I, yeah, I'd rather meet on the 3rd and not meet on the 25th myself.
All right, why don't we all look at our calendars, and maybe on Wednesday, we can try to sort this out.
Yeah.
So, I want everybody to look at their calendars, see which one works best.
29th, sorry.
All right, any other schedule issues, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I just want to, again, put on the screen, moving forward, on the Innovation and Technology Task Force, and begin to put that together, there's a lot going on, and each week brings new opportunities and challenges, and there was a particularly good study from New York that showed that Uber and Lyft actually increase congestion rather than reduce it, so there's some interesting challenges ahead for us.
All right, anything else?
One last thing, the flower baskets look great, love them, thank you.
Okay, should we go ahead and go into closed session, unless there's any other scheduling issues, and then take a five-minute break while they break down the cameras and the microphones, and how about that? All right, so, upon a motion made by council member-
Hardy.
Seconded by council member-
Lichtenhouse.
Can you do that?
I doubt it, but you want to go ahead and affirm what he just said?
That's fine.
All right, and passed by voice vote of city council, council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 point, 3711 point 8, for consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring such advice by such counsel, in particular revisions to the housing policy in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 29, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, specifically evaluation of proposals submitted in response to RFP 0501-18, George Mason High School, West Falls Church Economic Development, and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 point 3, for discussion of acquisition of real property for a public purpose where a discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy. Would anyone like me to repeat that?
Mr. Mayor, I would, if we could, we need to correct the first reference-
Okay.
-to the Virginia Code, which was 2.23711A 8, should be A 7.
Okay, so, I'm going to read the first portion again, passed by a vote of city council, council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 point 7, for consideration, for consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, as I just said. Councilor Connolly is absent, Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
See?
Yes.
Tartar, yep. All right, so it is now 10:16, why don't we take a short break, so they can break down the cameras, the microphones, use the restrooms, and we'll come back in here in just a moment. We are now coming out of closed session, upon a motion made by council member-
Z.
All right, seconded by council member-
Hardy.
Who?
Snyder.
All right, Snyder. And passed by a vote of city council, council reconvened in open session, council member Connolly is absent, councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
See?
Yes.
Tartar, yep. All right, is there anything else to be said tonight?
Move to adjourn, Mayor.
All right, let's do it, we are adjourned. Thank you.